Raise hand function. Mayor Hughesman, I do not see, oh, there we go, alright. I have Divine LLC that just raised their hand whenever I ask, so I'm gonna unmute them to see if this is Emmett. The person listed as Divine LLC, you should be allowed to unmute yourself, is this Emmett Hobbly?
Yes, it is.
Alright, Emmett, you can proceed with your public comments, I'm gonna start the timer at three minutes, so just listen for the beep, okay?
I'm a community activist. And the things that are going on at Suncor are something that the community can't tolerate. The last emission yellow rain that came from Suncor, the community had to ask a lot of questions to find out what happened. And still, we don't have answers. And none of those people in that community have been compensated for the for the ills that were placed on them, and they still don't know the effects of what happened. And then you've done it again. And so we wanna know what you're gonna do about it, and why this keeps happening, and why shouldn't we just shut you down? That's, that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbly. Next on the list is Margaret Elizabeth.
I see Margaret here. Margaret, you should be allowed to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes once you begin.
My name is Margaret Fur, and I too want to comment on the Suncor situation. I was looking in the Denver Post, there was an article on August 13th, and it talked about in March, the Colorado officials announced a legal settlement to reset a pattern of problems at the refinery. And for more than a decade residents in surrounding Denver Commerce City and unincorporated Adams County have been raising concerns. A couple of weeks ago, after, a couple of weeks after that announcement, an equipment failure at the refinery led to a burst of hydrogen sulfide and other pollution, triggering a company alarm and forcing a partial shutdown. State officials said at the time they'd investigate and possibly seek penalties. And they ordered Suncor to hire a third-party consultant to determine root causes of repeated equipment failures. It was unclear, the article said, whether that analysis was done and what it concluded. And I want to, as a Denver citizen, question, you know, has this Suncor hired a third-party consultant? And have they determined the root causes of the repeated equipment failures? This is in a residential area, and it's next to a very large city that's highly polluted. And I don't think we can tolerate this type of contamination and pollution, especially in the time of COVID. Which shows, the analysis shows that people who have COVID and who are in polluted areas suffer more. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Harmony Cummins.
Harmony, you should be allowed to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Hi, from the tar sands in Canada to the refinery in Commerce City, the Suncor holds no regard for the environment, safety, or the communities they destroy and exploit. They only care about profits and dollars. I know this to be true because I spent eight years working in oil and gas. I have been to Indian reservations in North Dakota where it looks like a war zone from all the flaring gas, the crude oil loading sites in Weld County, the poison sugar fields and oil tank farms in Louisiana. It was my job to track risk and calculate profit and loss for oil traders. One of the traders I worked with made $12 million in one month. That's right, one month. On an average month, $1 to $3 million was being made by the men that I worked for. The company I worked for did deals with Suncor. I have been to parties, events, and meetings with folks from Suncor, who have greatly profited, grossly profited from the backs of others. I have heard from mothers and children who live in the shadows of the Suncor refinery. I hear about asthma, nosebleeds, cognitive issues, and so much more. The men I worked for made millions of dollars off the backs and lungs of these children's mothers and these communities. I hope you hear the pleas from these mothers, and their voices haunt you. Maybe the refinery doesn't directly impact you, your community, the same way. Though Suncor's activities and continued violations, they are polluting all of us. They are poisoning our land, air, and water. Maybe you have noticed, our state is on fire. We reap what we sow, and the climate crisis is coming for all of us. What will it take for us to change and hold these companies accountable? I am so sorry to all these mothers, their children, and communities. This is not fair and needs to change. Shame on all of us who have allowed this to happen, and more, shame on all of us who allow this to continue. Please do something.
Thank you. Next on the list is, and I apologize if I mispronounce this, Ian Tofoya.
Looks like Ian is with Harmony. Harmony, I'm assuming Ian's there with you?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You'll have three minutes once you begin, Ian.
Hello, my name is Ian Thomas Tofoya, and I am the co-chair of the Colorado Latino Forum, a nonprofit engaged in empowerment of Latinos and Latinos in the state of Colorado. Our 11 current-serving board members have all run for office. Some were successful and held office, and we have two city council members sitting on it now. We stand united in asking this city council what the hell is going on? Where the hell is Pearl Mutter? Why aren't we working with the county commissioners? I'm from Denver, and I live in Denver, and I fought on I-70, and I fight with these, for these refineries, and I can tell you, it is all along these jurisdictional boundaries between the EPA, CDPHE, Tri-City Health, or our own boundaries that are drawn on a line to divide us from our power to take on these industrial polluters. I know that the VP is set to be on tonight, and the lawyers. We're aware of what you are doing across the globe. We stand united in shutting down the money pipeline, and I stand with workers as well to ask Commerce City City Council, County Commissioners of Adams County, and Ed Pearl Mutter to join Diana Deget, and Denver legislators who wanna see a better future and improved air quality. And the last thing I wanna say is, to the mothers that are listening tonight, that wake with their child, gasping for air. We hear you, we stand with you, the time has come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is, and again, I apologize if I mispronounce this, Karmi Attilano.
You should be able to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, you may proceed.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and City Council, I'm Carmen Attilano, and I'm the Neighborhood Relations Manager for Urban Land Conservancy. We're a nonprofit working to secure real estate for community needs, including affordable housing, schools, medical facilities, and commercial workspace. In our 17 years, ULC has invested over $120 million, resulting in $750 million in affordable housing, nonprofit facility development. Our first investment in Commerce City is South Black Crossing on 72nd Colorado Boulevard. And it includes plans to build over 60 affordable housing apartments. So as an organization, ULC embraces environmental justice and has experience in environmental remediation. In fact, one of ULC's strategic goals is our commitment to sustainability. We create energy-efficient buildings, often located near transit stations to help reduce auto traffic and give individuals and families the opportunity to inhabit safe and livable neighborhoods. And we also know the location of the refinery amidst large communities of color, we feel there's clearly an injustice. The historical and ongoing release of toxins from the Suncor refinery calls into question ULC's ability to carry out its mission in some parts of the Denver metro area. We believe that the housing we build should be safe and healthy, healthy places for families to live. But, you know, how can we stand behind our environmental and sustainable values when deadly toxins are released into the neighborhood and efforts to regulate them are clearly and consistently violated? So ULC encourages you, City Council, to take a decisive decision on behalf of the health of Commerce City residents. There is extensive data on refinery emissions and their impact on public health. So we ask you that you consider that information carefully. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Next on the list is Sunny Benoit.
You should be able to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Can you hear me?
We can, yes, you may proceed.
Hi, good evening, my name is Sunny Benoit, and thank you so much for allowing us to speak tonight. I am the current president of 350 Colorado, which is a nonprofit grassroots organization working to solve the climate crisis and transition to a just and sustainable future. I am here tonight speaking on behalf of our members, and especially our members who live in Commerce City and Denver. And I am here specifically to talk about Suncor, which is the second-largest polluter in Colorado, who brings their dirty tar sands from Canada to be refined in Commerce City, where the poisons leach into the soil, air, and water of Commerce City in effect, not only those residents, but the residents of Denver. Last week, there was another major, what I'm going to call disaster, at the Suncor refinery. That released, from what I understand, large amounts of sulfur dioxide into the air, although the reporting has been little to none, which is not acceptable, given that the residents of those areas deserve to know what they are exposed to. There have been reports that Suncor has leaked PFAS, or forever chemicals, into the water and soil of Sand Creek, which affects not only Commerce City drinking water, but everything south of that, including myself here in Denver. And this is not an uncommon experience at the Suncor refinery. One of our allies, Wild Earth Guardians, did some research and found more than 2,750 air permit quality violations by Suncor in 2019 alone. And while the COVID pandemic has lessened the demand for oil and gas during this time, there are still major disruptions at the Suncor refinery that are poisoning the health and safety of the residents of Colorado, and this is not acceptable. It needs to end. This continuous massive violations need to stop. They are affecting primarily communities of color and lower-income communities, and it has made this an environmental justice issue. I would urge the members of the Commerce City Council to look at their powers under 181 to regulate oil and gas. I would also ask you to look at your powers to speak with the governor, to speak with the CDPHE, and urge stronger legislation to protect these people and make sure that their health and safety takes priority over corporate profits. Thank you so much for your time, and I really hope that we can see some action in the very near future.
Thank you. Next on the list is Lucy Molina.
Lucy, you should be able to unmute yourself, then you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can, yes, you may proceed, Lucy.
My name is Lucy Molina, and I'm here from Commerce City. Thank you again, everyone, for your service. I know it's not easy what you're doing. I just wanna $9 million that Suncor was fined, $2.6 million is coming to Commerce City, which is pocket change. I would like to just let my council know that this is pocket change, and I really hope that, for once, y'all can stand with us, the community. I long, I really, I'd like to see my representation and leaders that don't bend over for corporations, industries, and developers. And for once, just for once, stand up for us, for the people. I was there when I heard the doctors at the state capitol when we were testifying for not only Senate Bill 181, 1265, and 1261. I was there, sitting there, when I heard professionals, scientists, and doctors talk about cancer, leukemia, migraines, bloody noses, and diabetes. That was talking about my family that lives in 80216 and 800222 here in Commerce City. And in, also, I would like to let you know that Facebook and social media is not the only ways of communication. I asked my mother if she knew what was going on, and she had no idea, because we still haven't gotten anything to our home. Not everybody is on Facebook and social media. So another thing is that Suncor Boys and Girls Club is not a charity. The Summer Fiesta, sponsored by the Suncor, is not, that is not a favor for us. Also, I really hope that this council, regardless of anything, I know I'm not your best resident here, but I do care about my neighbors and my family. I do hope that you do the right decision, and I long for the day that I can stand with representatives that do care about our community. So God bless you. Oh yeah, God bless you, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Next on the list is Shayna Oliver.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Alright. Thank you for this opportunity to make comment on this. My name is Shayna Oliver. I am a northeast Denver resident. And when I look for a home, my best options are in Adams County and Commerce City, as well as the homeless people are being pushed to that area as well. In that area where the Colosseum is at, as well as homeless people are camping out in these areas as well. So we should keep in mind that it's not just residents, we have homeless people that are also being exposed to what Suncor has released. Two weeks ago, I had a friend that shared a picture, and her view is north Denver. So she got a good picture of Suncor spewing all that mess into our air. And every day since I signed up with smoggy days alerts, I've been alerted every day that every day is a risk level for me, as an asthma, with a person having asthma, as well as my children have really bad allergies. Since this is, since we've been having hotter days, which increases our ozone alerts as well, caused by oil and gas, as well as our cars, and the residents here and the health impacts. When we're looking at COVID, I was looking at an article, and COVID is killing us by 1,600, but our number-one killer is still cancer. And my, being an Indigenous woman and a tribal member of the Navajo Nation, all my people are impacted with cancer. We don't get to have on our death records died of natural causes. That was stolen from us, since the genocide of your people that you consider this government to be a stable government. But the stable government has not allowed us to live a healthy environment with our health. And we no longer have access to our clean water, our clean lands, or air. And those are Indigenous rights that we all have. So it is time for this industry to clean up its act and acknowledge Indigenous people's rights. It is our right to have access to clean water, clean air, and land. And this, this industry exports more than it actually has, than it actually benefits the economy here. And when the number-one cause of death is cancer, that's where all our costs go, and and our economic burden is based on these economic hardships and burdens of surrounding cancer and our health problems every day, due to the fact that we can't make it to work. And I expect this council to really see through that you have the opportunity to change things and to shut this down, for one. Because we don't need it anymore, and our greenhouse gases, we need to start reducing for 1261. So thank you for taking my comment.
Thank you. Next on the list is Steve Douglas.
Steve, you should be able to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Okay, thank you, Dylan. Good night, City Council, Mayor. Thank you for citizens' communication tonight. I have an ask tonight, I know doing presentations would be nice that when we're able to speak on a public hearing, that we could direct our questions to the applicant, not to the council, because the council's asking their questions, and we would like also to ask questions of the applicant as well, so that would be great to do that. I think it'd be bold for this council, they've been asking since the beginning of the year, of reports from Suncor. And I think Suncor could actually share that information with the current council about what type of chemicals are being spewed in the air at times of production, what production levels, just to know what's actually going on, and not have to go through the federal red tape, as for them to have a way out of not giving clear answers. And true readings, tonight I see that Donald Austin will be doing a presentation for, he's the vice president of Suncor Refinery. And to Donald, if you're listening, I would ask that you be clear about your messaging. You are, you do have, you're, you you are operating and responsible for the environmental damages that have been caused by Suncor, especially from the tar sands that are being processed. And I know you're having a hard time trying to start up that other portion of the refinery, and maybe you should think about not refining tar sands anymore. But I do ask this council to put the pressure on Suncor, because they've been a bad actor in this community. And all we've been hearing for months, years, is excuses, and you guys have been asking for answers, and you have not been giving them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. You're also signed up to speak on Resolutions 2020-34, 2020-63, and Ordinance 2289, would you please make those comments now?
Okay. I'm also signed up for the public hearing.
Yes, you are.
Okay. I will hold off until the public hearing. I appreciate you acknowledging that, thank you.
At this time, I'd like to take a five-minute recess. Mr. Gibson, can you give me a call my cellphone, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We'll take a five-minute recess and be back at 6:32. Thank you. We'll take a five-minute recess and be back at 6:32. Alright, we'll re-adjourn, um, reconvene. I apologize. Um, sorry for the short recess and the hasty recess like that. The agenda for tonight's meeting and the script were not lining up, so I was seeking clarification from our city clerk on that. Um, next on the agenda is presentations and the first presentation is a Suncor update, so I will invite Donald Austin, Vice President of Suncor. Commerce City Refinery to prepare his remarks.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, Mr. Austin, we can. Yep.
Thank you. First of all, uh, Mr. Mayor and uh, the council members, I thank you and appreciate the opportunity. Uh, to provide details on last week's fire incident and to answer your questions. First, before I get into the details of the incident and its impacts. I want to just reiterate, we regret the incident and are continuing with our improvement work to reduce and eliminate such incidents. And improve our communication around these incidents. We are not satisfied where we are and we have much more to do. But there are signs of improvement. If you look at our permit reaches compared this year with last year, we're down considerably. That's not an excuse. We have much more work to do. We're committed to do that work and we will continue to do that work. But the purpose of tonight was to come along and provide details on the incident and its impacts of last Thursday. So if you can bear with me for five minutes, I'll take you through these details and then invite your questions. The background to this incident is that last Thursday, we had one of our three steam boilers in plant one down for plant maintenance. This is annual routine maintenance. At 1:00 PM on Thursday, we're working on replacing components in the program logic controller. A spurious signal was sent to two operating boilers, causing them to shut down. Major action was taken to conserve steam, prevent a major shutdown and its associated environmental impacts. By taking the FCC or fluidized catalytic converter out of service along with other equipment. Placing it in circulation to minimize our steam and minimize our emissions. The strategy being to stabilize quickly by acting big and then to minimize the emissions as a result. Within 10 minutes, one of the two boilers that had tripped out were back online, but the second boiler had issues restarting. And it took us till 4:30 that afternoon to be able to start. Uh, to restart that boiler, I should say. By 5:00 PM, all environmental parameters were within the permit limits. And during the period from 1:00 till 5:00, the emissions were as follows. From 1 o'clock to 1:30, the FCC opacity rose to 50%. Returning to 20% and to below 20%, the normal permit level at 1:30. Carbon monoxide in the FCC stack rose to 1,500 parts per million. Returning to less than 500 parts per million, the permit limit by 5:00 PM as we stabilized the FCC unit. H2S concentrations in the flare and fuel gas rose to a maximum of 194 and 176 parts per million. And we're back below the limit of 162 parts per minute per million by 5:00 PM. It should be noted that the H2S existed within the processes within the pipes of the refinery. And these emissions then are converted, these H2S that are within these processes. Go to our flares and our heaters and they're commit, are converted to SO2. So hence, it was really SO2 emissions that emit, that were coming at this period in time. While this was going on, uh, we, during this, we initiated community monitoring around the refinery. To check the concentrations from, against the short-term exposure limits. And started this work at 3:00 and continued the work until we were back below permit limits. When levels, uh, these checks included SO2, carbon monoxide, hydrogen sulfide and VOCs. All checks except two in this period indicated zero on our monitors. The two exceptions were at 3:45 PM and showed H2S at 0.5 parts per million. In the car park at the RBC, the refinery business center and at 6290 Colorado Boulevard. Subsequent checks in these areas 30, 45 minutes later show zero levels. In addition, downwind of the refinery, CDPHG has community monitor stations. These monitoring stations are set to record at the parts per billion level and are looking for longer-term impacts. And we seen on these, nothing detected in terms of. PN10, that's particulate concentrations, carbon monoxide or SO2 that are above the daily background level. There was one exception to this and that was at the La Casa Station. That showed for a short period of time, around about 10 minutes, a spike around three parts per mo, at 3:00 PM. When the SO2 level increased to 20 parts per billion. Uh, should be noted that the federal exposure level for long-term SO2 is actually 75 parts per billion. So we were below that. By 5:00 PM, all parameters were under permit limits and between 5:00 and midnight. We were completing checks, getting ready to restart our units. At midnight, we began a restart. At 3:00 AM, through to 6:00 AM, we introduced feature FCC and the CO2, the CO level rose to 1,300 parts per million. And returned to below 500 by 6:00 AM, which, which is normal for such a startup. At around 5:00 AM, there was some smoky flaring for eight minutes due to steam control and balancing issues in the refinery. And again, that was corrected and back to normal within eight minutes of stipulated. By 6:00 AM, all parameters were back within permit limits. Equally, during this period, we, from midnight through to 8:00 AM, this is on Friday morning. We uh, conducted community monitoring again for the same parameters and all the readings were zero. Similarly, if you look at CDPHG's downwind stations, it didn't show anything with regard to particulate matter, SO. SO2 and carbon monoxide. I wanted to give you the facts as it was for that incident. Uh, I'm going to stop there and I know you may all have many questions. I would like to offer up. The ability for me to answer these if I can.
Anybody have, on council, have questions for Mr. Austin? Counselwoman Noble.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Uh, appreciate you being here tonight, although it's regrettable why you're here. Um, sulfur dioxide is toxic. Uh, H2S is hydrogen sulfide and that's cancer-causing. When this incident occurred on August 13th, it took until August 14th to find out publicly. Uh, and it wasn't sent to us, what was in any of these emissions. At what point do you know, I have other questions, but at what point do you know what's in the emissions?
I would say within several hours, we were aware and getting that information to the public is something that we need to do more of. Also, a lot of the data I gave you in terms of the CDPHG monitoring stations is available in the public domain as well. I think what we see is there's lots of data around. We need to pull it together into one place and communicate that better than we're doing. We're actually in conversation with CDPHG to do that in the early stages. And we look to share and get the involvement of this council, the county and the community and how we can best do that for them.
Yes, and CDPHG spoke to our study session last week and they will be putting up. Air quality monitoring stations, which are, as many of us said, long overdue in the area. This refinery was opened in 1931, so next year it's 90 years. At what point has. Material on that property, pipes above ground, pipes below ground, lost their integrity? At what point do residents have even greater fears perhaps of what could occur? I'm curious what your um, uh, plans are for this plant in terms of. Capital projects, bringing things up to speed. The explosion, the massive explosion in Philadelphia last year was simply an elbow pipe. That had last been replaced in 1973 and led to that massive explosion. At this huge, huge, huge um, facility that you operate in the Commerce City area. There must be many points at which um, there is a potential for disaster and you're in the midst of. Um, residential areas as well. How do you guarantee or what assurances can you give residents. Regarding catastrophic failure at the refinery?
Okay. First of all, I would answer that by there is many what we call praise process safety management. Tools and processes we follow. These are set down in guidelines within law and within best practice. An example is some of the things you talked about is every five years, we shut down our units. We do a complete overhaul. We do online testing of integrity and at the times for the things we can't do online, we do it these five-year intervals. To give you an idea of the investment that is, we have a turnaround coming up for plant one in 2021. That is somewhere around $90 million and that's basically us taking the unit down. Confirming, checking everything, ensuring that it's good for five years. That's the integrity process of inspection that we use. But there is other processes that we do to do what we call PHAs, process hazard analysis. We do what ifs, looking at the potential for these catastrophic events. We then check them against what we've learned in industry and, and we've learned against. Incidents like you talked about in Philadelphia, such that we invest and put that money back into the asset. I foresee that through the next two or three years, we will spend 200-ish, maybe more million dollars. In these things as we continue to check, assure and convince ourselves and others that the integrity of the asset is safe.
Which plant had the boiler issue on the 13th?
Plant one had the boiler issue on the 13th.
Okay, and there was a question earlier regarding third party and also, uh. Yes, third party and then the repeated failures because I have, when you spoke to us the first time after. We voted in December that we would have a monthly Suncor report. You said that we know that you expect more from us and we want you to know that we expect more from ourselves. And I just don't know how this repeated cycle can resolve itself under these circumstances. It's very disturbing.
Okay, I think there's several questions there. Let me uh, take them. First of all, the third-party audit. The company that we're using is a company called Kearney. They uh, we have agreed and approved them to be used with CDPHG. That was completed last month. Kearney representatives arrived at site last week. We are in the process of providing them with data, with information. They will analyze that and provide that back to us and CDPHG. In terms of the third-party audit, that's where we are. In terms of the work that we want to do to improve, there is many things that we're doing there. They stand from looking at our bad actors, looking at how we improve the processes there, improve training. Improving that we uh, also understand our roles or processes or procedures as well as we have to, to be able to control it. Also includes making sure, as I just talked about, our turnarounds, that the right work is done. And that we're investing to ensure in the integrity of this asset. We are doubling down on these. There is some signs of improvement. We have a long way to go and I remain committed to that statement that I made earlier this year.
It's been a few months though and that, that is um, concerning. Um, did you say that you were using a company as a third party? What was the name of the company?
Kearney, K-E-A-R-N-E-Y.
Okay, thank you very much. And um. I think that's, uh, just one, one final. And, um, I think that's, uh, just one, one final thing. This neighborhood that surrounds SNCOR, out of 127 refineries around the country, the, the residents in this area earn $42,000 less annually than the rest of Denver. It is the worst payroll salary gap in the entire country. So we have an obligation, I, I can't emphasize this enough, an obligation to, uh, protect vulnerable residents, vulnerable people who may not feel that they have the power to do anything about this. Somehow, we have to find a solution. And seeing you, or not seeing you, as the case may be tonight, is not the solution I'm looking for. I'll have other ideas during administrative business that I want to put forward. But thank you very much for, uh, appearing before us. And, um, as I said earlier, I wish we didn't have to have this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Madera?
So you mentioned that you guys initiated some air monitoring. Do people have, uh, access to those results?
Yes, we do. Uh, sorry, when you say do people have access, do you mean the community or what, what do you mean?
Yeah, so the community and specifically to SNCOR's, um, air quality monitoring.
Yeah, I, I think there's different, there's different forms of monitoring. We have our own instrumentation within the plant that monitors the levels that I talked about in terms of H2S and opacity. That information is within SNCOR. I'm more than happy to share that in a medium, in the right medium, and I would like, I'd love to do so. We also did our ground monitoring that is done by personnel, taking handheld monitors, going around and checking. That information, uh, took me through, basically said zero levels, except for the one or two H2S, 0.5 parts per million, which are below the occupational shock count standards. Again, held within SNCOR, but I clearly understand and see a need to share this data wider and better with the community. Because I think people need to see the values, and I think transparency is huge in this place.
Yeah, I, I think those should be made public and, uh, you know, it, it goes both ways, right? Because we, if we have proper information, we aren't just, uh, basing our, um, reactions based on anecdotal type, uh, information. So if you could make that available to the public, I, I would appreciate that. Because I know C D P H E is working on monitoring, but it's actually surprising that the stations that they do have aren't really in the commu- communities most impacted by SNCOR. Not until recently have they started putting, uh, monitoring stations in, in these communities.
I would say there's lots of data around here, and we need to bring it together into one place. And we need to share and show what that means. I, I've been talking with C D P H E about that just today. Something that I think is an improvement that we need to make in the transparency of data. I think it's good for all parties.
And then just, we had a lot of people during assistant communication today, speaking about emissions and, uh, you know, calling the council to action. But, now, just to clarify, who regulates, um, emissions for the refinery?
The regulation, the emissions is through C D P H E as part of the EPA.
And do they also, uh, issue the fines and penalties?
They are done through the, yes, they do.
So I guess another, um, question that kind of goes hand in hand with this, uh, as part of the settlement with the C D P H E, um, you know, one of the things that arose was, uh, to have better communication with the residents. So I just want to know what SNCOR are doing specifically in regards to this? And, uh, how, how are they going to reach all these residents? Because, you know, as we found out, not one medium works for everyone.
Yeah. So you're absolutely right. Uh, we are looking to improve community. So far, what we've done is we've set up a look at what are the best systems that are around? What options do we have? We've been looking across industry. We've been formulating for our own selves what we need to do. The next step is to get the involvement of the community. And we've just started reaching out to key stakeholders or groups. We're employed a consultant F T I to help us with that. And that work is ongoing now. Uh, groups like yourselves, council members, groups like C D P H E, commissioners, et cetera. That work has just started to gather their input into what they would like to see and how they feel better, or what they feel better would look like. That will continue through and into September. Uh, we're currently planning, and we're hoping to finalize our plans in the next week or two, is to start a survey of the general public. This will be in English and Spanish. We will be reaching out to people through direct mail, through social media, et cetera, to conduct telephone and online surveys and try and gather what the people would like to see and put that together with what we believe are systems that could make this better. The aim here is to bring this all together for, uh, what we would call focus group work in the middle of October, and then be able to come to, through that analysis, through these discussions, what are the right improvements, what are the right processes? They need to be, to be able to provide information quicker, quality information, and information that's trusted.
And does SNCOR have, you know, any tangible goals or metrics that they're shooting for in terms of improvement? Because, you know, I've heard this seems like the entire time that I've been on council is that we need to do better, and we're working to do better. But what specifically is SNCOR shooting for? And how will we know, you know, that they're achieving these goals?
I think where SNCOR is shooting for is to get a position where, fast and immediate, we can get information to people that is appropriate. And what I mean by appropriate, appropriate to what that information is. For instance, if there was, and heaven forbid, a major incident, we want to be able to get to people very quickly. There's other information that is needed in respect to informing people of what they're seeing or hearing. How do we do that quickly? And then there's information that is regular reporting. How do we do that? We see three elements to this. We see the standard for that being time. Standard being how quickly can we get that? And the quality feedback we get from people. These systems have to be two-way. It's not just about us providing information to the community. There is also information that we need to respond to, to their questions. They, again, the criteria for this is all around time. And in our sessions with the community, we're looking to understand what timeframes would they like to see. I see us needing to get information within minutes and hours, not days.
Finally, you know, I guess, you know, what, what can this council do to hold SNCOR accountable?
I, I think, uh, to hold us accountable, I, I think that is done through C D P H E, and that's to involve them. I think also to increase our dialogue and let us get involved in the issues and help resolve them. Uh, I think that would help holding us accountable. We'd like the feedback from the community more. Uh, we'd like more, more and more people to get involved and given us that feedback. I think that feedback itself brings accountability, that we want to live up to being a good neighbor, which clearly we're not achieving at the moment.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Yes, thank you for presenting again. Um, like, I, I do think it's unfortunate that we're having to have you present again under these circumstances, but have a few questions. Back on, um, May 4th, when you presented to us, you told us in the presentation that you have a citizen advisory committee possibly being started, um. You know, this is some of the problem. When is that going to get started? I know because of the COVID, but this is really affecting our residents. I mean, you keep saying you're going to reach out to the residents and the community. Um, it continues to affect the community, et cetera. So nothing like an attempted virtual meeting of some sort or reaching out before this other incident is going to occur?
There, there's two things there. We've had, uh, community advisory committee, council, if you like, for many years. What we were talking about is setting up this survey and groups of feedback. And we are looking to provide that survey in the second week of September out to people, and then come together in these focus groups in October to discuss what is the right way forward.
And then back in, on March 17th, you said it was Plant Number Two, correct, that had the problem? Is this the same plant having the problem that just occurred on Thursday?
No, Plant Two, uh, you're right, was back in March. And Plant Two, because of the, the situation in supply and demand here in, uh, Colorado, has been offline up till about two weeks ago. This was on Plant One. This was a different plant. Plant Two is actually in the process of restarting.
And who regulates how often you restart the plants? You said every five years to ensure safety and, you know, the environment and health. Do you think it, it could be considered maybe to reevaluate that, and should they be restarted more frequently?
There, there is a, a lot of work done within the industry, assessing technical methods for checking and ensuring the reliability, integrity of our asset. Industry would say that five years is the optimum. Uh, and given the techniques we have, I believe that is right.
Then another question on May 7th. You informed council and the residents and the community that Sand Creek from SNCOR was producing a sheen in the water at Sand Creek. So from the incident on Thursday, are you continuing to monitor Sand Creek, um, the water as well, and any updates on what's going on with Sand Creek? And did it affect Sand Creek again since, from the incident on Thursday?
No, there's no link between incident Thursday and Sand Creek, but let me bring you up to speed with Sand Creek. Sand Creek, we, through our own patrols, identified a sheen, a few bubbles coming to the surface some while in the creek. We then went and checked the boundary line to see if anything was coming from SNCOR. We've done multiple checks over weeks, and we know that our barriers that prevent underground water coming out through are not being breached. We concluded and have been able to identify a spot within the creek where material which we see to be what we call aged distillate, it's like easel, it's, uh, around 20 years old, has been lying in some of the silt in the creek for a long period of time. That was being released. Since then, we've seen the barriers on the creek. We've removed that silt. We've put down permeable, uh, liners. We're about to re, we're basically getting very close to have finished that work. We're reviewing it with C D P H E, and we're getting close to removing these barriers and putting the creek back to normal. This was something that's been there for a long time and has come to the surface, and we now have dealt with it.
Thank you, but to clarify, a sheen is considered a pollutant, correct?
It is. Any sign of a sheen in the water, we, is a pollutant, no matter how small.
Thank you.
Councilman Wariola?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Austin, for the updates. I just had a, a couple of questions. Um, when you said that you guys didn't do a major shutdown, what would happen if you would, uh, shut that completely down when this happened last Thursday?
If we had shut down completely last Thursday, the emissions would have been much greater. What we did was we put our units into circulation, we minimized them. But if we'd taken the units completely down, it would have meant a way, way more flaring, way more emissions.
Okay, thank you. And, and the other last thing, again, um, I'm, I'm, I'm glad you guys are working on a communication system, and it's been in the works for the last couple of years. And I think, uh, you know, I think you guys might be overthinking it. Um, we've, have heard what our residents want, loud and clear. A simple system, just to get the quick information of stuff like that that happens. Because it comes to us, and then we put it on social media and send out emails. And, um, you know, I do appreciate you guys are take, talking to all the stakeholders and bringing those people together, because it is very important. But, but a quick solution would be a simple callback service that education partners use when we have a shutdown or a lockdown. Um, you know, um, at least start with the neighboring, uh, uh, neighbors, uh, neighborhoods around SNCOR. That would be a quick, uh, solution that's not that expensive, because it's a, it's a system that just, and I mean, people would have to opt in real quick, and I'm sure you'll get tons of people to opt in. Um, but that is just the suggestions, because we've been working on this since I've been on council and a couple of my colleagues on how do we, and then keep doing what you're doing, bringing in those stakeholders and seeing really what other means we could do with our community. But just the suggestion that a quick auto dialer, uh, would solve a lot of, uh, confusion. Um, and again, it's, it's a simple suggestion. Thank you, sir.
And thank you for your feedback there. We will certainly take that into account, and we would like to get more of that feedback uh, as we go into the, the public replies that we're looking for in middle of September.
Councilman Hearst?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, sir. Uh, and, you know, don't want to harp on some of the pointed questions that were asked by my fellow council members. I thought they did a good job asking questions. Uh, I also too wanted to talk about the communication system that, um, first of all, wh- what is the C D P H E finding agreement, um, you know, require of you in terms of, or require of SNCOR in terms of building, uh, a communication system? Um, as Councilman Goriolo just said, I, I believe there is some simple solutions, uh, at least for the immediate community surrounding the area, whether it's in Denver Commerce City or Adams County. Um, I believe, uh, similar phone system as to, uh, updates at the school when there's going to be a holiday or, or, um, you know, when your kid, uh, is absent and they call to let you know. I think that system could be fairly, uh, fairly affordable and, um, put to use pretty quickly. But also, you know, considering the possibilities, and, and as you said, heaven forbid any of those happen, um, what is a reverse 911 system being considered? Where we basically geofence, uh, areas, uh, that could possibly be, uh, affected? And then have not only, uh, phone calls, but some type of other messaging systems, whether that's social media, you know, all of the above type communication in that situation? Because we've he- heard over and over again that, you know, a single medium communication is never going to work. Um, we have to find ways to communicate with all different, uh, types of, uh, generational differences, whether it's some people have cell phones, some people want a newspaper, some people want an email, so on and so forth. Um, you know, so, so really, I think what I'd be interested in is hearing what C D P H E's requirement is, and then how are you going to meet that requirement? And then hopefully exceed it by, um, finding a system that works to be able to get the information out as quickly as possible. Uh, I, I guess there's one asterisk to that. I do understand, um, that during an, an event like this, you know, understanding what the readings are to be able to get the information out accurately is also important. But I do, uh, you know, I would caution that I don't want to delay the message going out by saying something happened. Um, you know, whether we know if it's serious or not, you know, potentially with the message of shelter inside or something similar to that, needs to go out with follow, you know, with the kind of promise to follow up. After we get the air quality readings, uh, we will notify the public of those numbers or, or those, um, of, of the issue, you know, directly. And so, you know, that I think is a start. Obviously, all of us want to hear about the investments to make to, to avoid these problems moving forward. Um, but, but, you know, when these events do happen, w- we need to be, uh, confident that our residents in the area are first to know. Quite honestly, in that situation, I would much rather hear them, uh, know that they're getting Quite honestly, in that situation, I would much rather hear them know that they're getting that information before me. I would also like that information, but the first priority for me is to make sure that it gets out to the immediate communities around. And then if I'm further on down that list, so be it. So, you know, obviously, there's a lot of interest in communication. There's a lot of interest in, you know, how we fix these issues. And quite honestly, I think we're all invested into the success on fixing these issues. We all want to see it happen. We know, you know, we know where the regulatory agencies where we fall in that chain of command. And so we're just trying to see how we can make the current situation better for our community and be part of the solutions moving forward.
I think specifically you asked me a question about what was the targets that had been set with CDPHE. The target is to have a working solution in place in the new year, early in the new year. Currently, with our program, we see being in a position somewhere towards December to having that. We need the next vital step to happening, which is get the feedback from the community, what they want to see, lay it beside the technologies are out there and then provide the right answer. I think that's the targets that we've set. We actually discussed these with CDPHE today. We all remain committed to meet these targets. And the next vital phase is communication, but and understanding what the community wants. And I hear you loud and clear that we need to get to them quickly and simply, and that's what comes first. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Yes, thank you. I forgot to mention a couple of things. But right now, Austin, is there a person with Commerce City that is a point of contact for you that you do have to notify?
There is a contact number and there is email at points where people can reach us, yes.
Now, I mean, when occurrence occurs with Suncor, is there a city staff member or our mayor or someone that you have to notify currently?
Currently, we notify into the staff at Commerce City when we have an incident.
Thank you. And then another consideration, if you can take this into consideration. I'm aware from what I've heard that a lot of our residents want a town hall meeting. If you can arrange that together with CDPHE and Suncor together.
We will certainly take that into consideration. Thank you for that feedback.
Okay. And then one last question. Does CDPHE require you, I know you can report it, but similar to like occurrence reports, where anybody can log in and look at that occurrence report?
We provide these reports to CDPHE. They put them on their website. They are accessible through that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Austin, for your presentation this evening. I just wanted, there's a lot of talk amongst council tonight about some sort of a reverse nine-one-one auto dialer for when incidents occur, but I think it's really important to also talk about context. Because just simply notifying that something has occurred, I think, could incite more alarm than necessary. And I just wanted to kind of put that out there and also and get your feedback on that and how Suncor would handle not only notifying of an incident, but giving context for what has happened and what it means for anyone who's being notified.
Agree with you 100%. Data is not all of the answer. We have to then give the context. What does that mean? What do I have to do? What does it mean to me? That has to be included in that communication. That is something we're looking into.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Noel.
I just wanted to point out that HB 201243 mandates a communication system that would be reverse nine-one-one in English and Spanish for Suncor. So that's already in place. And secondly, I wanted to ask about the emergency towers. I happen to live within a block of an emergency tower and every couple of weeks, they do a test and it just screams out information while they're doing the emergency test. Are there emergency test towers throughout Commerce City? And could one of those, could the towers be employed in those neighborhoods when they would be required? And Mr. Austin probably isn't the person to answer that question, but I think that might be a possibility. And regarding our authority to do things, those are things that I wish to discuss later. I realize, you know, that I'm going to bring up later during the administrative council business because I think there are things that we can do, even given the fact that this is overseen by CDPHE and the federal government. Thank you.
Thank you. And with regard to your question there, I don't know how to answer that at the moment, but I'll get back to you.
Thank you. Mr. Austin, I want to thank you for joining us, especially on such short notice. Not going to mince words with you. I felt like a battered spouse here. In December, you blew your top and spewed catalyst all over the house, knocking me around a bit. You apologized, make a big to do about how you're going to do better. And I'm running around telling all my friends how you didn't mean it, how much you regret it and how you're going to do better, telling them I need you and things will change. Then in March, you come home and knock me around some more, spewing catalyst all over again. Once again, you apologize and tell me you'll do better and I believe you. Couple of months go by and you knock me around again with all sheens in the creek. Of course, the apologies and promises are repeated. Then the state steps in and not only fines you for abusing me, but also says we need to go to counseling to work together and come up with solutions so you don't hurt me again. But the night of our first counseling session, you blow up again and knock me around some more, exceeding emissions with another issue. This pattern of abuse is terrifying, but it isn't just what has happened this year. You have a longstanding history of abusing this community, of beating us, of professing your regret, promising to do better and never doing so. Because although you claim that your emission exceedance are better this year than they were the last year, we all know that no amount of exceedance is acceptable. So my question to you is very blunt. What is the root cause of this issue here? Is it a lack of leadership, a lack of maintenance, a lack of capital funding or a laissez-faire attitude that has us here together this evening?
The answer to your question is that we are looking at all of these things and looking to improve everything to get there. We've done that through bringing in the third party to look at, we're looking at industry best practices. I am committed for this refinery to be better made.
You guys have owned the refinery since 2005, I think. In 2019, the first nine months, you had 2,750 self-notifying exceedance of air quality emissions. How is this acceptable within your organization? How does your company think such behavior and such actions are acceptable?
We don't think it's acceptable, Mayor, and we are actually investing in trying to correct that.
Well, what action can you tell me has been done to date to correct that? Because here we sit again with another exceedance, another blow up and another issue that we have to answer to the residents for your failures to do what you're supposed to do.
The work we've done so far is to look at improving and investing in our infrastructure. We're also building into our turnaround, coming up to do more work. We've been looking at training procedures. We've also been doubling down on what we call bad actors and preparing and ensuring that these things are corrected. There is a lot of work we have been doing.
Well, what I'm hearing is you're looking at a lot of things. What I'd like to know is what has been done and what will be done in the near future in order to prevent this from happening again.
What has been done is looking at training and procedures. What has been done is looking at maintenance bad actors and getting more work done.
Again, every answer that you started with says you're looking at these things. That doesn't tell me that you've taken any action to correct any of that. So at what point do we quit looking at these issues and what part do we start taking action to make sure that we don't have these issues repeat?
Maybe not being clear enough, Mr. Mayor, but the training has been and is being done. The bad actors have been identified and are being looked into. That is not what we're going to do. It's what we have been doing and continue to do.
Well, if you continue to weed out bad actors and we continue to have problems like this, at what point do we just stand there and say that Suncor is the bad actor, not the individual employees?
Hey, I'm not blaming the employees at all here. What I'm saying is that we need to have a better performance. There's many elements to it. We are working on that today. We have done things in that. There is some, there is signs that it is improving and I expect it to continue to improve and to get to a point that we don't have to have these conversations.
For myself, the rate of improvement is not near fast enough. And I think for the community that you are affecting on a daily basis. And every time you have one of these incidents, the rate of improvement is not near fast enough. So thank you again for your time this evening. Hopefully, we don't have to have this meeting again in the near future. Next on the agenda is a presentation on the COVID-19 update. Interim City Manager Tingleberg, would you please provide that update?
Right. Keep it very brief. Basically, we're operating as the same as we were in recent weeks, staying at level two, working remotely and have limited recreation programs going on. With that, I will turn it over to Chief Nichols.
Thank you, ladies. Good evening, council members. We have reached out to TRC County head at the best of the council to determine how they were handling complaints that were received in Commerce City. The information that we learned that's contained in the city manager update for the week of August 17th. Briefly, TRC County has been very responsive to the complaints.
Chief, we're getting terrible feedback.
I'm sorry that that has a little better.
Try again.
TRC County has sent our representatives out to collaborate with them periodically over the past four months. And since now high, these visits include monitoring, and hygienic procedures.
Still getting terrible feedback on your system, chief. Do you have another program open?
I don't know about it.
No. Sorry, no. We'll move on to Deputy Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will make my update very brief as well. Wanted to let the public know that the Q-list button has been added to the city's webpage. So residents can go to our webpage, press that button and make an appointment for any city services if they choose to come to the building. There is no update on the CARES Act funding. The report's not due to Adams County until September. June 15th, council passed Resolution 2041 authorizing an additional $100,000 towards the program for a third round of grant funding to include home-based businesses. The resolution also included that any grantees from funding from the first two rounds were not eligible to apply for a grant in the third round. The application period for round three funding was from July 22nd through the 27th. There were a total of 28 applications received. Two were in Spanish, two were in, 26 were in English. There were 10 home-based business applicants in total. Seven applications were deemed to not meet the minimum grant criteria. The city has awarded $91,000 in funding to 21 business applicants. The other comment I wanted to make this evening was to let you all know that Commerce City has again been awarded the distinguished budget presentation award for 2020. And I'm certain that Cheryl Carstens will be in front of you to share that award with you in the future. This is the fourth time we've received that award. Thank you.
Final wrap-up, really nothing else to report. Unfortunately, the chief is having technical difficulties, so we'll have to circle back with him at another time. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Does anyone on council have questions for staff regarding the COVID-19 update? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next on the agenda is the 2019 community survey results. Will the city clerk please introduce the consultant and make the presentation?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm moving over Jade Aroca, who is a senior research analyst for the National Research Council. Jade, you should be able to start your webcam and meet yourself and share your screen whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Can you all hear me okay?
We can, yes.
Perfect. And can you see my screen?
We can, yeah.
Great. Okay. All right. I will try to move through the results of the survey as quickly as I can, keep you guys on your scheduled agenda for the evening. Good evening. My name is Jade Arocha and I am a senior research analyst with National Research Center. I'm pleased to be here presenting the 2019 results of the National Community Survey for Commerce City. Just a little bit about the NCS. This is a turnkey, templatized citizen survey that was developed jointly between NRC and ICMA. And due to the standardization of the survey, this allows us to not only keep costs down for you, but to provide you with the greatest number of benchmark comparisons as well. Our survey follows three broad pillars of community livability. Those are shown on the screen here, community characteristics, governance and participation. And in addition to those three facets, we also slice and dice the data by eight different facets of community livability. These often align to specific sub-departments of jurisdictions. Those facets shown on the screen here, safety, mobility, natural environment, built environment, economy, recreation and wellness, education and enrichment and community engagement, as well as the overall quality of the community. A lot of the results that I will speak about tonight in the next few minutes are categorized into these facets. Before we go into the specific results from the 2019 survey, I just wanted to briefly go over the methods that were used. So this was the third time that Commerce City has worked with NRC to conduct the National Community Survey. Previously, the survey was done in 2017 and 2018. We sent the survey to a random selection of 2,400 households, which is a larger than usual sample size for this survey. Of those 2,400 households, we received 294 returns to the mailed survey. We also conducted a community-wide opt-in online survey. That survey was publicized on social media, city website and otherwise by the city. We received 289 responses to that survey for a margin of error of plus or minus 6%. The survey was also translated into Spanish. And so the mailing materials that accompanied the survey also had Spanish paragraphs on them instructing residents who wanted to complete the survey in Spanish instead of English, they could go online to do so. The survey was available in both Spanish and English online. So residents had the option to either complete and return a paper survey in the mail or to go online to fill it out. We also, as in previous years, conducted geographic and demographic subgroup comparisons as well as a custom subset of benchmarks. I briefly also want to say that in previous years, the results from the community-wide survey and the mailed random sample survey were combined together. This year, that methodology was not performed as we did not receive a sufficient number of responses to be able to do that this year. And in subsequent years in 2020 and going forward, we hope to be able to resume that blended methodology. So we did see a decrease in participation from 2018 to 2019, both for the mailed version of the survey as well as for the online opt-in version of the survey. We attribute this to both what we refer to in the survey industry as survey fatigue, which is residents being surveyed frequently. And so we can see response rates decrease over time as well as generally nationwide. We are seeing decreases in response rates to surveys as an industry-wide trend. We have actually incorporated that into our scope for the next year's survey, should you choose to conduct. scope for the next year's survey, should you choose to conduct that, and we would propose mailing to a greater number of households. We now offer a different approach to mailing and to reaching residents, so that we are contacting far more households for similar costs as we have done in the past. I'm happy to take questions about that either now or at the end of this brief presentation. This is a map of our national benchmark comparisons. At any given point, there are about 600 communities that are in this database, our proprietary database, and all of that data is five years old or younger. Compared to those national benchmarks, in 2019, 56 of Commerce City's individual items were rated similar to the benchmark, 67 were rated lower. While this seems on the surface to not be the best news, I do want to point out that this is a better proportion, a more positive proportion than we saw in 2018. And compared to the custom subset of benchmarks, two were higher than the custom average, 62 were similar, and 59 were lower. Same trend here, more items on the survey were similar this year than in 2018, fewer received lower ratings. The two items that received higher ratings compared to other custom, I should also say that the custom benchmark subset was other front-range communities with similar populations to Commerce City. So compared to that subset, those two items that were rated higher were the availability of affordable quality housing and affordable quality childcare and preschool. Finally, compared to 2018, in 2019, 100 items were rated similarly year-over-year, 20 items were rated more positively, and three items received ratings that were lower in 2019. So good news there. Trends tend to be stable or on the rise. So this is what we call our honeycomb. This is a, basically a quality and importance matrix. You can see the comparison to the benchmark rating by the color coding that's happening here. The middle blue items are similar to the benchmark comparisons, the lighter blue were rated lower than the national benchmarks. And then the stars indicate the facets that residents rated as most important in 2019: safety, natural environment, and economy. We use this honeycomb to inform the key findings that we identify in the report. And so this presentation, the remainder of it, is focused on those key findings. These are what stood out to us as survey researchers. However, there's a lot of data to review, and we would say that you can surely identify additional key findings by reviewing the data on your own. So with that, our first key finding: safety contributes to quality of life and merits continued focus. 89% of residents feel safe in their neighborhoods. That is an increase since 2018. 64% felt safe in the commercial area of Commerce City. And the rating for overall feeling of safety in the city was 54%, excellent or good. Safety-related services in the city. 65% gave excellent or good ratings to police, and then about half positively rated crime prevention, emergency preparedness, and animal control. Do want to point out that the rating for emergency preparedness increased by nearly 10 percentage points just in one year, which is a notable increase just in one survey year. Our second key finding: getting around town is getting easier. Lots of good news here in the facet of mobility. Residents are rating street repair, bus or transit services, ease of walking, traffic signal timing, and paths and walking trails more positively than they did just one year ago. Some of these increases are double-digit increases, so this is notable progress in this category. Our third key finding: there have been small gains in the local economy, and it remains an area of opportunity. Economy as a focus area, 8 in 10 residents think economic health is important for the city to focus on in the next two years. 3 in 10 residents positively rated the overall economic health of Commerce City, the city as a place to work, and economic development. And then 2 in 10 residents or less positively rated vibrant downtown commercial area, business and service establishments, shopping opportunities, employment opportunities, Commerce City as a place to visit, and the cost of living in the community. With that said, year-over-year trends are also looking up here since 2018. We can see that there was a decrease in a couple of these items: optimism about the economy and economic development from 2017 to 2018. Those are on the rise again in 2019. A larger percentage of residents also indicated that they work in Commerce City in 2019. Our fourth and final key finding: residents take steps to take healthy, sorry, to stay healthy, but would like more recreation and wellness opportunities. Some general health indicators here: 1 in 2 residents report being in excellent or very good health. And then 3/4 ate five portions of fruits and vegetables and participated in moderate or vigorous physical activities. These are just broad indicators that are used to assess community health. Participation in recreation: 83% of residents had visited a city park, and 66% had used community recreation centers. Both of these ratings were similar to the national benchmarks. And then we also have seen some gains in the area of recreation and wellness, healthcare, health services, recreation programs, recreation centers, and city parks have all seen upward trends from 2018 to 2019. Again, some of those are double-digit increases, which is great news in just one year. Finally, looking at health and wellness ratings. The overall rating for health and wellness opportunities, 40% gave this an excellent or good rating, while about half positively rated fitness opportunities and recreational opportunities. And then about 4 in 10 gave positive ratings to the availability of affordable quality food. So some opportunities there. Finally, this was a custom question added to the survey. "To what degree, if at all, do the following barriers exist to prevent you and your family from participating in programs and services offered by Commerce City Parks, Recreation, and Golf?" The most commonly indicated barrier was lack of certain kinds of programming. About 1, about 3 in 10 residents said this was definitely a barrier, and another 4 in 10 said this was sort of a barrier, hours of programming, costs of programs or activities were next on the list. Language barriers were generally not identified as being a barrier for most residents. And then other custom questions included on the survey. So this question asks about sources of information about the city, asks residents to indicate whether they use each as a major source, a minor source, or not a source of information. You can see the, basically, the ranking of information sources displayed here. 9 in 10 use the monthly city newsletter, nearly 9 in 10 use direct mail, 8 in 10 the city website, about 3/4 word-of-mouth. And then from there downward, we see city social media, 7 in 10. 2/3 of residents, city council and other public meetings, and about half use local newspapers. I always like to point out when our clients ask this question that while it is really important to know what your most commonly consumed sources of information are, it's also really important to utilize all of them because different residents are utilizing each of these. You're reaching different populations by using these different methods of outreach. A similar question we just asked here for residents to indicate which one of these methods is their strongest preference for receiving information. City website, 55% of residents indicated this as their one most preferred method. And then from there, monthly city newsletter, direct mail, and social media, about 4 in 10 residents. And then much fewer preferred as their main source of city information, any of the remaining options there. Finally, as their preferred method of providing feedback to the city, about 6 in 10 preferred email, 4 in 10 preferred using the city website via reported concern or Ask C3, or using social media. And then 20% or fewer preferred phone, talking to city of staff or elected officials in person at public meetings, or another method. And thinking about different meeting times that residents might be more likely to attend. 4 in 10 residents were likely, they were equally likely to attend meetings, whether they were weekdays between 5 and 7, between 7 and 9, Saturday mornings between 10 and noon, or Saturday afternoons between 1 and 5. Sunday afternoon was the least popular option, about 3 in 10 residents were likely to attend at that time. And I am happy to take questions at this time.
Councilman Wariola.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. A quick question on the barriers. Do we know how many Spanish results and English results were turned in from the breakdown?
I can quickly look at that information. Yes, we do know. We only received one response in Spanish, which is very typical, even when Spanish translation is provided as an option. These folks are notoriously hard to reach in survey efforts. And further, we find that many Spanish-speaking households also speak Spanish well enough, sorry, also speak English well enough to be able to take the survey in English. So, and again, this is an issue we are aware of, and even by providing that translation, we just don't often see very many responses in Spanish.
Right, so I would say the 80% might be a smaller number than if usually the folks that speak another language, this might be a barrier, right?
That is correct. Yes, if we were to hear from more people who have the language barrier in place, then yes, I would, but I would agree with you that that rating would likely be quite different.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Yes, thank you for presenting for us tonight as well. I just was curious, out of the 2,400 residents that were sent surveys, do we, how do you determine who the surveys go to? Like, is it split separate, you know, split totally for the north and the south?
It is proportional. We want to survey residents in the proportions in which they live in the community. We get a comprehensive list of all addresses in the community, and we use GIS boundary files to make sure each household is within city limits, and from that, we randomly select our households. The only adjustment that we make is that we oversample, what's called oversampling multifamily households. The reason for this is that folks who live in multifamily housing are, again, notoriously hard to reach. And we, we oversample those households in an effort to hear from more of them in order to balance who we're hearing from more closely to the population census norms.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Noble.
Do you have demographics on the respondents? And secondly, when you ask the question about safety, we just had a conversation earlier this evening about the Suncor Refinery. Is it potentially possible, is it possible, that people responding have other things in mind when they're answering questions about safety?
Absolutely. Often, we do have specific safety-related questions. Those relate to specific services, police, fire, et cetera, crime prevention. We do also ask about the overall feeling of safety in the city. And you're right that that could encompass, I mean, that we are asking for resident perception. So that traditionally means sense of physical safety, but it could also encompass things like feeling of environmental safety, for example. So going forward in future years, we would strongly encourage to include a custom question of that nature to dig deeper into specific community concerns that you think that you might have, and to ask more specifically about that.
And the demographics of the respondents?
The demographics, so we did, we do ask a number of demographic questions on the survey, and Commerce City does pay for an additional demographic subgroup report, so, which compares the responses to each and every question by five different demographic characteristics. Those are age, gender, race, and ethnicity, housing tenure, so whether they rent or own their homes, and then housing unit type being attached or detached. There's a separate report of results that tabulates the responses to those, and also indicates whether or not there's those differences in ratings by each of those demographics is statistically significant.
Could you provide that breakdown to us as well? Because I think some of these answers seem kind of oddly specific into certain areas and so forth. So it would be interesting to see who was responding to these. Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions regarding this? Yeah, well, thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is the Eagle Point Recreation Center Public Art Recommendation. Would Jody Hardy, Community Relations Manager, please make the presentation?
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. Please give me a moment to share my screen here. Thank you all for your time this evening. I'm here to present on the public art recommendation for the Eagle Point Recreation Center. The Eagle Point Recreation Center was completed in December of 2018. At the time, the Public Art Committee was only able to install one of the two recommended exterior art pieces due to budget constraints at the time, and the Cultural Council is seeking City Council's approval to install this second piece of exterior artwork. So just a little bit of background information on the selection process. The Art Selection Committee was comprised of representatives from Cultural Council, residents, and city staff. The Public Art Selection Committee met from September 2017, and their last meeting was in March of 2018. The committee reviewed and juried 47 applications, and three Colorado artists were selected as semifinalists. So here's some background information on three semifinalist artists that were narrowed down for this exterior art piece. So the Public Art Committee and the Cultural Council recommended artist Lisa Russell to create the exterior wall sculpture for the Recreation Center, which is shown here. And City Council approved this recommendation, and the artwork was installed in October 2018. The Public Art Committee also agreed to fundraise for a second piece of art, and this was from artist Jody Bliss to create a sculpture. Cultural Council members did apply for a grant from the SCFD to obtain the second piece of artwork. And then in fall of last year, the Cultural Council did receive this SCFD grant in the amount of $14,323. So here's a visual, a rendering of what the sculpture will look like, and the Commerce City Cultural Council is recommending the following public art installation consistent with the master plan that will award Jody Bliss a commission from the city for $24,750 for the design, construction, and installation of this proposed artwork. So should council accept this recommendation, the next steps would be next month for staff to finalize the contract with this artist. Also to select the outdoor artwork location at Eagle Point, and we'll work closely with Parks, Recreation, and Golf staff to recommend the final site location. Then in October, the recommended site would go back to the Cultural Council for their final approval, and then install the artwork in spring of next year. So the direction we're asking for you all tonight is, does the City Council approve the installation of the sculpture at Eagle Point Recreation Center? And I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Anyone on council have any questions for Ms. Hardy? Seeing no questions, are there any motions anybody wishes to make regarding this item? Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
I, I make a motion to move that we proceed with the purchase of the artwork as stated.
A motion to proceed as staff is directed, Councilwoman Grimes.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second to proceed with the purchase and go along with the timeline as staff is presented. Is there any discussion? Councilman Wadiola.
No discussion, sorry.
Councilman Hearst.
All I discuss not have is the comment that, you know, I really respect the process that the Art Committee through the Cultural Council goes through. You know, a lot, a lot of considerations are made, a lot of good questions are asked. And so um obviously, I just wanted to comment uh in support of this decision. Because I know that that committee worked hard to uh come up the final uh pick.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Ellen Thomas, do you have anything to add?
No, that was a mistake. I apologize.
Alright, I have a motion in a second to approve the purchase of the art piece and go forward with the schedule as uh presented. We'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Ellen Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wadiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hearst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Uh staff, you have your direction on that item. Next on the agenda is a presentation on the Council Policy and Governance Committee Proposal. Will City Attorney Sheasley please make the presentation?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Um before you tonight to talk about um a policy committee proposal raised by motion of Mr. Wadiola back at the end of June, I believe, of this year. I worked with the council member to come up with this proposal. For your consideration tonight, there is a draft resolution package that council wished to enact as, as proposed. Uh but here to get feedback primarily if there are changes desired. Dylan, would you mind bringing up the presentation, please?
Yep, I will do that now.
So as with all council committees, these are established through your council policies. And so the proposal would be to establish an amendment to your council policies. To create this committee uh per your policies, council appoints three members, three official members to each committee. Although anyone can attend meetings and provide input. And so the proposed committee tonight uh is meant to address council level policies. And potentially even going so far as talking about charter changes or ordinances. But focusing on matters relating to council policies and, and governance. How council uh does their work, how council gets along, et cetera. Some of the specific responsibilities that are laid out uh for the count, for the committee then to define their own work that they then bring back to the City Council uh would be to recommend those policy changes. That could then be incorporated either into the code or, or potentially charter amendments or the council policies. But beyond that, the members of this committee could also serve as individuals who could educate the City Council, the public uh and the staff even about policies, goals, roles of council and staff. And then the division of authority in a council manager form of government, so that everybody understands the playing field uh better. And then during council meetings, um these members could, in addition to the chair of the meeting, advocate for and encourage meeting procedures focusing on policy issues and appropriate city business. And then sort of try to hold council members and the council as a whole to a higher level of civility, order and decorum. And then finally, to the extent possible, individuals appointed to this committee could be uh, could serve in a position to help mediate disputes between council members um to sort, help serve as a bridge. So this is proposed not only as a committee role, but as an individual role where people the council chooses to appoint to this committee could, uh without having any authority or um necessarily power of any kind, um serve in a position um to stand for um this higher level of uh either debate or decorum and policymaking from the council level perspectives. Next slide, please. Some of the immediate issues uh that were targeted uh in Mr. Wadiola's motion or from discussions, I believe. We're talking about um how council members interact with each other, um treat each other, um what their proper roles are and what rights each council members have. How council members could interact uh with their appointees and staff. What standard should council um use to make sure that their work focuses on proper, on policy issues and then appropriate city business? What is the process for referring complaints about elected officials um or appointed officials? And then specifically, how would council go about enforcing this? What sorts of penalties could um a council uh impose against its own members? These were some of the immediate issues that the committee would discuss and bring back recommendations uh for the council to ultimately decide. And then the final slide is just simply to ask if council has discussion on this um questions. And then um if council is so impressed with all of this, we could um approve the resolution as it's presented. And um consider either at this meeting or at a future meeting, uh appointing three members to the committee. Thank you.
And Mr. Sheasley, are there any questions from council staff regarding this item? So then, does any council member wish to make a motion regarding this item? Councilwoman Noble.
I move to approve the resolution to establish a council policy and governance committee.
Councilman Wadiola.
I'll second.
A motion in a second to approve the resolution and establish a council policy and governance committee. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Would you like me to read the title of the draft resolution just for posterity's sake?
Yes, please.
Alright, uh resolution, this would be uh according to my files, Resolution twenty twenty dash sixty-four. Resolution amending council policy to, to establish a city council policy and governance committee. Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Ellen Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wadiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hearst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Um also, a question was, how do we want to uh point people to that? Let's go ahead and save that for administrative council business, if anybody wishes to make a motion to appoint members to that committee. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion in a separate vote. Tonight, there are five items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item off the consent agenda for further discussion? Councilwoman Smith.
Um, I don't wish to remove it. It's just for ordinance Z dash six nine two dash nine eight dash two zero. I was not here for that meeting, but I did watch the review of it.
Thank you for that statement. Any other council members wish to remove an item off of the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda by council seated. Mayor Pro Tim.
Motion to approve the consent agenda by council seated.
Councilman Hearst.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda by council seated. Will the city clerk please read the titles and take a roll call vote?
Resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-four, resolution authorizing amendment to master services agreement with Baseline Engineering Corporation. Resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-five, resolution authorizing award of contract for installation of traffic signals on East Eighty-third Avenue and Tower Road to WL Contractors Incorporated. Resolution twenty twenty dash sixty-one, joint resolution approving standards for the inclusion of property in the Commerce City Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District. Resolution twenty twenty dash sixty-two, resolution appointing substitute judges. Ordinance Z dash six nine two dash nine eight dash two zero and ordinance amending ordinance Z dash six nine two dash nine eight to rezone four point nine nine acres from AG Agricultural to C three regional commercial district for the property located approximately one two five zero zero, East One Hundred and Fourth Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado. And amending the zoning map of the City of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning. Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Ellen Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wadiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hearst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Frank, or Mayor Pro Tim Frank, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Uh we do not have any pulled consent agenda items to discuss. Next on the agenda is public hearing. Uh Resolution two zero two zero dash two one, approving the consolidated service plan and intergovernment agreement for Legato Metro District numbers one through seven. Tonight's public hearing will be for Legato Metropolitan District numbers one through seven and the IGA. I remind council to use the public hearing only to ask questions, but not to express opinions or indicate how you will vote. Council members not to provide testimony if they wish to participate in the decision. To rely only on the facts developed in this hearing and in the record and apply those facts to the criteria in the land development code. This time, I will open the public hearing and invite John Borger to, a management analyst, to make the presentation.
Alright, good evening, Mayor, honorable council members. Can everyone see my screen?
We can, yes, John.
Okay. So my name's John Borgerli. I will be presenting case MD one one seven dash one nine. Uh the ser, proposed service plan for Legato Metro District numbers one through seven. The applicant is also available and will be making a presentation as well. So this is a proposal for seven new metro districts. They're all proposed to be formed within city limits upon annexation. The estimated total for public improvements for the district is approximately one hundred and sixteen million dollars. The total debt issuance that this service plan would authorize is one hundred million dollars. That other sixteen million dollars would be raised through other funding sources, not through the debt. This presentation will serve two purposes. It will provide a review of, a review of metropolitan districts, their purpose and council action that you can take tonight, as well as a review of the proposed service plan. So a metro district, this is a quick review, is a quasi-governmental entity that has the authority to impose taxes and fees on its residents. Typically for the purpose of financing construction, infrastructure and develop, uh for development and also operations and maintenance once that development is in place. The service plan defines and limits those district functions, powers and revenue they have. And they're governed by Tabor, uh Cora, as well as Title Thirty-two CRS. District revenue mostly comes from property taxes as well as fees. And the district debt, that one hundred million dollar uh figure, that is not a city obligation that is solely borne by the metro district. A Commerce City does use a model service plan and it's been modified to address applicant requests and other updates. Council actions that can be taken on the service plan, there are three. Uh can either be approved, approved with conditions, or it can be disapproved. Per CRS Title Thirty-two, City Council must disapprove of the service plan unless satisfactory evidence is presented showing sufficient existing and projected need for organized service. That the existing service is inadequate for present and projected needs. The proposed district is capable of providing economical and sufficient service. The area to be included has or will have financial ability to discharge the proposed indebtedness on a reasonable basis. So the elements of the service plan, it establishes the general powers, including the construction of improvements and the operation of parks and landscaping. And these are all the references within the service plan where you can find these provisions. Uh the debt issuance limit, which is based on an explicit formula, the mill levy caps, the uh allow for the imposition of fees as well as taxes, reimbursement agreements that cannot include compounding interest. That City Council approval is required for any modifications to the service plan, as well as use of eminent domain or inclusions and exclusions for the boundaries of metro districts. It also authorizes the district's activity IGA. Additionally, it lays out provisions for disclosure both to initial purchasers and to residential buyers. Uh it does touch on debt and refinancing. Uh no mill levy that lasts longer than forty years can be approved unless it is approved by the board while it is resident controlled. It also requires all board meetings to be held within city limits. Statutory annual notice to be mailed to all property owners by January thirty-first, as well as reporting to the city and same regarding taxes and debt. Here's a vicinity map. You can see that the proposed metro districts bordered to the west by Tower Road, E four seventy to the east, ninety-sixth Ave to the north and Eightieth to the south. There are seven districts as part of this. District one would be mixed use, two residential attached and detached, three uh would be detached, four also residential detached. Five would be commercial space, six would be office and flex as well as multifamily residences, and seven would be office and flex. An overview, getting a little bit more specific to the service plan here. It's a consolidated service plan for seven districts, which is approximately six hundred five acres. An estimated population of seven thousand and sixty-five residents at full buildout. The estimated improvement cost around one hundred and sixteen million dollars, with the debt issuance limit of one hundred million dollars. The maximum combined mill levy as set out in the service plan is sixty-six point three 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 mills, as broken down below, which is roughly average for metro districts within Commerce City. Uh organizational costs would be fifty thousand dollars for startup. And the first year operating budget is twenty-five thousand dollars per district. So with seven districts, the total of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The uh enclosure E, the applicant's financial plan, does find that there will be sufficient property tax and other revenues to discharge this proposed indebtedness at these levels. So again, the review criteria, these are the, the four things that council looks at when reviewing this. Staff has already completed a review and does believe that based on the proposed service plan, there appears to, it contains the information required by CRS Title Thirty-two and sufficiently to support a determination that the requirements are met based on the applicant's submission. Uh now the applicant will go and they'll present additional supporting information as well as financial analysis.
Dylan, do you have that presentation pulled up? If not, I can, I can pull it up.
Yes, I should be able to pull that up here uh very shortly, John.
Before we get to the applicant, uh does anyone on council have any questions for staff regarding this? Seeing no questions, we'll invite the applicant to speak and give their presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name's Megan Murphy. Are you guys able to hear me?
Yes, we can, Megan. Uh I'll be running the presentation, so just let me know whenever you want me to go to the next slide, okay?
Great, thank you. Next slide, please. Thanks for that great presentation, John. We're here to talk tonight about Legato Metropolitan Districts one through seven. Here's a vicinity map showing you the different layout of the districts in relation to each other and the type of uses in each. Next slide. So this little background information, as you guys know, the City Council has adopted a model service plan. Tonight, we're seeking approval for a consolidated service plan for Legato Metro Districts one through seven. Um our submission conforms to your model service plan. Next slide. Here's a breakdown of some key terms of the service plan that John covered very well. So we've got public improvements of one hundred and sixteen million. The debt limit of one hundred million is actually significantly less than allowed under the city's model formula. And the reason why we're asking for less debt than what the model formula allows is because it better matches with my client's plan and better matches the cost of public improvements for this project. The maximum debt mill levy term, forty years, that's your model. Max debt mill levy, operations mill levy and combined mill levy, all on the city's model. Next slide. The district is permitted to impose fees for operations and maintenance. We don't have any plans to impose fees at this time, but The district is permitted to impose fees for operations and maintenance. We don't have any plans to impose fees at this time, but that is what the model city. Model service plan allows. The district could also impose fees for debt, but could not impose these fees on an end user or what you typically think of as a. Someone who buys a residential unit. We don't have any plan to impose fees. The financial plan is not based on the imposition of fees. As John said, we're required to do significant amount of disclosure. And hold board meetings within city limits or within twenty miles of the district boundary. Again, all in conformance with your model service plan. Next slide, please. Here's a breakdown of the cost of improvements, the use and the size of each district. So you can kind of capture. An image of all of these districts together. So each district is significantly bigger than one acre, so we're not proposing any controlled district structure here. All of the districts that have residential units will have eligible electors as soon as the first person moves in. You'll notice districts five and seven are just commercial, so there won't be any residents living in those districts. Total, it's two thousand forty eight units, about two million square feet of commercial on six hundred acres. Next slide. So some proposed improvements are the standard Title thirty two improvement, storm, sanitary sewer, water, streets, traffic safety, park and recreation. I think this district is going to be able to bring some arterial road improvements along Tower ninety six. To bring people to the project, especially the commercial that borders those arterial streets. Next slide. Here's the proposed findings. John reviewed this. There is sufficient existing and projected need for service within the project. There are no services there now. Which means the current existing service is inadequate. The districts are capable of providing these service to these public improvements. And they certainly have the ability to discharge the proposed indebtedness. The financial plan shows the ability. To discharge significantly more debt than one hundred million dollars. Like I said earlier, the applicant is requesting that debt limit because it better matches the cost of public improvements for this project. I think that's the end of the show, Dylan. Oh, the benefits. Thank you for reminding me. So just remember, there's no other entity who can provide these services. There's no other metro districts on this property. The financial plan shows the ability to discharge and we are in compliance with your model. Thanks, Dylan. Thanks for showing that last slide. Happy to answer any questions or whatever is next.
Anyone on council have any questions for the applicant? Councilwoman Noble?
Thank you. City Attorney Sheasley. I have a question. I was under the impression that we were going to be reviewing service plans. And how our service plan read.
You mean to say that city council was going to be undergoing a process of reviewing our model service plan?
That was, that was correct, and we had plans to have a town hall on metro districts. Some of it got set aside, of course, because of COVID, but this was going to have a particular analysis. By the city council and by the community because. Because of things we know.
Yes, and Mr. Borjeli or Mr. Tinklinberger, Mr. Smith may be able to speak to the. Town hall and the process for considering metro district regulations. Those items did not prohibit the applicant from proceeding with this service plan request. I do believe that they. Delayed consideration of this particular service plan to the council. It was originally to go, I believe, in in March or April. They also wanted to see the outcome of that town hall, which has not been rescheduled. I was under the direction from council to obtain a special council review of some larger metro districts in the area. Which was completed at the end of last month or start of this month. But we have not been tracking an additional regulatory aspect or review of service plans that would have preempted consideration of this service plan.
Oh. I'd like to ask Ms. Murphy, I'm familiar with your law firm, by the way. Ms. Murphy, can you tell me if there is a master district? For this, there's seven districts. It's. Far smaller than the reunion metro districts and there are far more metro districts here. Is there a master district and are there any parcels of land that are not contiguous? With the six hundred acres that will be assigned master district status?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Noble. I'm gonna try to pull up a boundary map because I think that would help with the explanation. So hopefully I can screen share. Hopefully you can see this. Are you looking at this map here?
Yes, we are, Megan.
Okay, thank you. So all the districts are themselves contiguous. There's no district separation parcel. And there is no master district or coordinating district. So they're not all the same size because they're based on phasing and use. But they are all bigger than what we would typically see as a coordinating district about an acre in size. And this slide shows. The size, each of the acreage sizes here. So you've got all the way from forty thirty seven on the small end up to one hundred and eleven acres on the big end. Does that answer your question, Councilmember?
Yes. What services do the districts intend to provide beyond? The initial costs?
So the districts are intending to provide anything allowed by Title thirty two. The specific focus of this project will be streets, water, sewer and sanitation. My client's been working closely with South Adams County Water and Sanitation District. And representatives from the city to talk about water needs for this project. So that's kind of our big ticket items, streets, water, sewer, sand, but there will also be parks within the project, other public improvements.
Will you be maintaining the streets for the life of the districts? Or will it fall to the city to maintain the streets?
Unfortunately, I don't know the answer to that. I do have my engineer, Daniel Madruga on the line as well as the developer, Brad Burns. Who can maybe better represent what the P U D document says. I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that.
This is Daniel Madruga. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, I'm the civil engineer. I work for Alwell LLC and. And the intent is for the roads within the right of way and utilities there to be dedicated over to the city. Upon completion of construction. I believe there is a warranty period, but we are also going through. A public improvements agreement with the city right now. To dictate what needs to be built and how those items would be dedicated and turned over and in what shape they'd need to be. So. We're in that process right now, but the ultimate intent is for right of way, everything that would be built as part of the, or not everything, but. The majority of the roads and whatnot to be turned over to the city.
Okay, then for the one hundred million dollars. What are, what is the, what are the districts going to be maintaining for the life of the project? For the life of the districts?
So there, the majority of the hundred million dollars is for the actual construction of the project. The areas that would need to be maintained are detention facilities. There are two large regional detention facilities. That would need to be constructed and maintained by the metro districts. And then landscaping. There are several enhanced landscaping borders that would be maintained. As well as a few smaller pocket park type things within the, within the project. So that would be the items that would be maintained for the life of the project. Landscaping and the regional detention facilities would be the majority of what would be included there.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions on this for the applicant? Seeing none, I have two questions for you. Looking at your chart there, district one, five and six have commercial property. Economic development activities in the city have largely been a failure, especially in these districts that are both commercial and residential. If that commercial property is in development, will these bonds be paid back or will homeowners be on the hook to repay them?
Is that a question for me, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. So the question about if bonds. I sort of be sure I repeat it back, so I'm sure I'm answering the question. So in a mixed use project, say we issue debt and pledge bonds. And the commercial A V doesn't come online, will the residents have to pay back the debt? Is that the question?
Yes.
Okay, so in that case, when the districts pledge debt, they pledge a maximum mill levy. So let's just say that number is thirty mils. Since there's commercial property included, it won't be the high of the fifty five mils because that's simply too much for commercial property. So the district makes a promise to bondholders to impose the thirty mils regardless of what happens with the A V. So will residents continue to pay the thirty mils? Yes. Can residents be forced to pay a higher mill because commercial A V, A V didn't come online? No, the promise with the bondholders is the thirty mils. Or whatever mills pledged in the bond documents. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. My next question is section six, financial subsection C, paragraph two states. If the total amount of aggregate district debt is equal to or less than fifty percent of the issuing district's assessed valuation. Either on the date of issuance or at any time thereafter, the mill levy to be imposed to repay such portion of debt. Shall not be subject to the maximum debt mill levy. And as a result, the mill levy may be such amount as is necessary to pay the debt service on such debt without limitation of rate. For purpose of the foregoing, once debt has been determined to be within the parameters of the foregoing sentence, so that the district is entitled. To pledge its payment an unlimited ad valorem mill levy. The district may provide that such debt shall remain secured by such unlimited mill levy, notwithstanding any subsequent change in the issuing district's debt to assessed ratio. Can you please de-legalize that for us so that we can all understand what you were trying to say with that statement?
Yes, sir. That's, that's what we in the industry call the mill levy roll off. So what that means is you have a capped mill levy when you initially issue debt because the debt is higher than fifty percent of your A V. So you cap that mill levy, in this case fifty five point two seven seven mils. As your A V rises, over time, you're making debt payments, so your debt goes down. Eventually, your amount of outstanding debt will be less than fifty percent of your A V. Okay, so that's when we get to what we call the roll off, which is the long provision you just read. In that case, the district is able to pledge an unlimited mill levy. Which in practice means the district can refinance the debt at a more favorable rate. By saying, we don't have a debt on our cap, we're able to impose an unlimited mill levy. What the market sees that as is you have more, way more A V. Remember, at least fifty one percent more A V than you have debt. So your homes or your commercial is worth a lot more than you're trying to borrow. So you don't need to impose the fifty five point two seven seven mils. You can pledge unlimited debt to the market. The debt number that's actually pledged is negotiated in the bond documents depending on the amount of debt, but remember. The amount of debt only for the cost of public improvements. So it's not as if you can just issue a billion dollars in debt because you have an unlimited mill levy. You have to issue debt to pay for public improvements. So there is a real world cap on how much public improvements this project can support, which is one hundred and sixteen million. Does that answer your question?
It does, kind of.
Oh, shoot.
Problem is, my publicly educated brain sees that as if the. Debt is less than fifty percent of the assessed value, then a board of directors at that time could set an unlimited mill levy without trying to refinance. They could just say, well, you know what, let's go ahead and charge seventy mils, let's charge eighty mils, let's charge whatever. Based on the wording, the verbiage.
Let's talk about that scenario. Okay, so in that scenario, you've got, say, a million dollars of A V and you only owe, let's say, four hundred and fifty thousand in debt. You could increase, you could put the mill levy at seventy mils in your scenario. The reason why you wouldn't is that you have more money than you need to pay back your four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And you can't issue debt not for public improvements. So you could tax yourself more. But that money can't go anywhere. So that's why nobody would tax you more. No bond coun- council would sign off on that. No underwriter would issue those bonds. You couldn't. Practically make it work, even though theoretically they could raise the mill levy. The money has to go for public improvements, which you've already issued debt for, and you already have more A V than you need to pay it off. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. So back to the commercial property question, is the commercial property going to be subjected to the same sixty six mils? That the residential property will be subjected to?
That's not, that's not the current plan. We don't have, you know, market studies. We haven't seen, we haven't gone that far because we're here tonight to just get approval of the service plan. So it's up to that cap for those districts, but I'm not aware of a plan to impose sixty six mils on commercial. The applicant certainly wants commercial to thrive. And as you know, being assessed at twenty nine percent, sixty six mils on commercial can be quite a tax burden.
Okay, is that further broken down into the pro forma performed by DA Davidson that you can explain to us where those figures are going to come from?
Oh, yes, Sheila Mars from DA Davidson should be in the meetings. I'll turn over financial questions to her. Dylan, did she make it to the meeting?
She did. Let me move her over to panelists so she can unmute her microphone and start her webcam.
Thank you. All financial plan questions go to the experts.
Yes, great. This is Sheila with DA Davidson. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Sheila.
Okay, great. I think the question was how the commercial mill levies are broken down. And in our financial plan right now. What we are, what we have shown here is the max mill levy. Not the, I guess what we would say is a target mill levy for commercials. So as Megan described, the. The district will actually set the mill levies for commercial and in order to be competitive. You know, it's highly unlikely that they would set it at the cap. So the cap is just to set the boundaries for what's allowed for the district. But would unlikely be what would actually be charged to the commercial district. Other questions?
Thank you. Is anyone else on council have any follow up questions they'd like to address? Seeing none. Well, the clerk, please recognize Steve Douglas, who was registered to speak during this public hearing.
Steve, you should be able to unmute your microphone and provide your public testimony. Steve, are you there?
Okay, all right. Can you hear me now?
We can, Steve. Yes, you may proceed.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to ask questions to the applicant. My concern, you know, looking at the service plan is. You know, one, it's forty years. That's a long time. A limited amount of bonding capacity. Even those who explain if you had more than what you need, you, you know, how that scenario falls out, but we always. The one I see with the service plans is they always lean on the residents to take care of the project. To start a project and to end. Not only that, the way this, these seven districts are laid out. They're right next to a landfill. That's going to be there for another long, probably longer than a service plan. And so that concerns me about the residents and then, you know, being burdened with the sixty six mils. Even though the operation remains eleven mils. Is there any way that the service plan can be looked at where the, that, the debt? As far as the mill is set at, is no, can go, can going higher than thirty? Including the milk, the maintenance and operation for the residential. Because what's come to find out is over the years when folks purchase homes. And then that the first year they're in there, property taxes low, then the, and then the home catches up. And then the, I also noticed the Gallagher adjustment, so. It could go above sixty six mils. It could go up to seventy, eighty. It all depends on the Gallagher adjustment. So is there any way that this property can be built out to the residents? At thirty mils total instead of the sixty six mils? That's a question for the applicant.
Sorry, Mr. Douglas, but you're able to make testimony but not actually directly ask the applicant questions?
Okay. All right, can anybody ask the applicant those? All right, can anybody ask the applicant those questions? I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is that the end of your testimony, sir?
Uh, yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time this evening. Um, I would like to, uh, before I go back to Councilwoman Noble, I'd like to follow up with a question. When I look at the, um, presentation, it says forty-year maximum debt mill levy imposition term. Whenever I look in the service plan, it says I amortized over forty years. When I look at the chart from DA Davidson, it shows it going out to twenty-sixty-one. But I look at the very top, it says it's a series twenty-twenty-one Geo Bonds non-rated hundred-year, thirty-year maturity. So is that a typo or why are we looking at two different time periods between thirty years and forty years?
Can you direct me to the page, please, that you're referencing?
Um, I'm looking at the pro forma by DA Davidson and, uh, basically every page there says it's series twenty-twenty-one Geo Bonds non-rated hundred X thirty-year maturity.
Gotcha. Um, so you're talking about the, you're asking, um, why the title says thirty-year maturity, but it is shown, um, out to forty years, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Gotcha. Um, yeah, so the bonds would be, um, thirty-year bonds. Um, but what we show here is the potential for the full forty years. And no matter what, everything would be, um, the bonds would be terminate after forty years as the imposition term.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Noble, you had a follow-up question? You're on mute.
I am. I wanted to have, uh, the question answered that was posed previously by the speaker from the community regarding, um, the mill and Gallagher, et cetera.
Thank you, Councilmember Noble. If the question is, why can't we make this project work on thirty mils? The answer is, we can't fund public improvements of a hundred and sixteen million dollars on thirty mils. Um, it simply doesn't paper for the project that we have. And the question about the Gallagher adjustment, as many of you may know, there is a statewide ballot measure to repeal Gallagher, which will leave the assessment ratio at seven point one five percent. Who knows what November will bring, if that measure will pass or not, the voters will decide. Um, but the districts need the Gallagher adjustment and I'll let Sheila talk a little bit more about why they need that for bogus purposes.
Thank you. Um, so the question of why we need Gallagher, um, is mainly from the financing side of this would be, um, we can't really sell, um, the bonds if that is not on there. What we're selling to investors, uh, potentially selling to investors would be, uh, neutral revenue streams. So as the mill levy, um, would adjust upwards as the assessment, as we have seen, has continued to go down. Um, and that, that off balance or that offsetting, um, arm there allows the revenue to be neutral for the investors. Um, and so this helps create like a more predictable revenue stream um, that we can sell to investors. Um, if that revenue stream is not predictable, um, they, you know, the price would be, well, one, it would be really incredibly difficult to sell these bonds and two, um, they would just come at a higher price to actually sell these bonds, which potentially may be outside of, um, the interest rate that's set in the service plan.
Does the, um, service plan require the city council's approval? Should you ever choose to refinance or add additional debt?
Um, would you mind if I answer? Would you like your, your own attorney to answer?
Megan, I, I'm fine if, if you answer, but I would be happy to say, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, that no, there is not a council requirement of council approval for refinancing. Megan might be able to speak better to the, um, there is a restriction, though, on refinancing. You do have an overall debt limitation, however, so you could not increase your debt over the amount authorized without the city council approving a modification. Um, you can also not extend beyond that forty-year term, um, without the city council's approval of modification, unless you have a board that is controlled by residents. And then there's another portion to that that Megan's going to say for me right now, because I know she knows it.
And, and the refinancing will result in a net present value savings.
Yes. So in that case, that debt term, uh, that the, the mill levy term, rather, uh, could extend beyond forty years for the purposes of refinancing or refunding if the resident, uh, elected board allows it, um, and there are savings to it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Sheasley. And I'll just also add that the service plan does require the districts to present proposed financing to you. It's not for your approval, it's merely for your review, so you're aware of any proposed financings, um, that is required.
Councilwoman Owen Thomas?
Yes, thank you. Um, I was just concerned as to like, why is there so much, uh, res- why so much residential near the landfill opposed to commercial? Uh, that's one concern I have. And then another question, will the board consist of residents from the start to the end?
I'll take the second question, but I'll refer the land use questions to Daniel and Brad, um, from the development team. So the boards cannot include residents from the start to the end because this is the start right now and you've probably driven by and nobody lives there. It's dirt out in a field in Commerce City. So the first time that there'll be eligible electors or residents able to be on the board will be the first time someone buys property or moves into their home. I don't know exactly when that will be. COVID's given us unpredictable market conditions, so I'm not sure when that will be. But as soon as a resident does move in, they're an eligible elector, eligible to run for the board, eligible to vote in any election, but that won't be today because today there is nobody living there. Title thirty-two expressly authorizes the formation of districts at this stage and expressly authorizes the developer to enter into contracts to qualify people to address this very problem where a project is just starting. There are no streets to get to a house that someone could live at. We need the project to be approved to build the streets so there can be a house for someone to live at. Um, so that's the answer to the eligible elector question, but Daniel and Brad can maybe talk about the land use side of the layout.
Yes, thank you, Megan. This is Daniel again. Um, the, the reason we put the residential at the location we did is to follow the city of Commerce City's comprehensive use plan. The, they went through and dictated to us, well, I won't say dictated, but we agreed upon a, an area, a buffer between the residential, excuse me, and the commercial areas and the landfill that met approximately the area that was, um, shown on the planned use development. So when we were going through that phase of the project, we discussed things about the needed buffer between those and the minimum buffer that everybody thought would be necessary and it was, you know, shown at that location. So, um, you know, without going into all the meetings and discussions we had, you know, that's the simple answer is we tried to get it as, as close to, um, the landfill as possible to allow as much residential use as possible, but at the same time provide as much buffer as possible. Right now it sits at about a quarter mile from the landfill.
Great. Thank you. And is there a planned amount of, or certain amount of parks and open space that will be in the area as well?
Yes, there is, um, Councilwoman. There is a planned use development that shows, um, we have, we are offering, are dedicating a school, uh, about twenty-five acres for a middle school and we're dedicating a ten-acre park that is central to the entire development. Inside each residential area, however, there are also pocket parks and legato itself means connectivity. And so we've taken it, um, a step further with the land planning by, you know, connecting those parks to the central portion, the school and the neighborhood park in the middle and created gr- trails and green space throughout each of the residential neighborhoods to provide that same access for everybody to get, not only from their house to maybe a community park or a pocket park within their neighborhood, but also to the, the big ten-acre community park and all walkable was the, was the concept there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Sheasley, I have one other question before I close the public hearing. Uh, the mill levy is starting at fifty-five point two seven seven, um, subject to Gallagher adjustments as it conforms with the city's model service plan. I do know our model service plan does allow for the Gallagherization of the mill levy, but I was not aware that it is allowed to start higher than the fifty-mill levy cap that has been used in the past.
So are, is the question about a mill levy cap or where it would start? I, I don't believe that we've actually imposed a specific mill levy cap, um, uniformly ever in a service plan. Um, for the first time in the last couple of years, the city has, uh, imposed a mill levy cap overall, um, including a cap on aggregate mill levy for operations and maintenance. And this structure has not been different than the, uh, service plans approved by council last year. Is there a discrepancy in the mill levy there?
No, I was just, I was under the impression that we had a starting cap of fifty mils on the debt limit and then it could be Gallagherized after that.
No. Yes, it was, uh, each with the reunion in Third Creek West Metro Districts that came in last year were assessed based on, uh, what the applicant determined they needed in order to construct their project.
Thank you. Uh, one last time before I close the public hearing, are there any other questions for staff or for the applicant regarding this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Thank you, everybody, for your participation. Oh, actually, uh, excuse me, before I close, one more question for this clerk. Are there any written comments submitted on this item?
Mayor Huesman, no written comments were received by the deadline.
Thank you. Now I will close the public hearing. Um, right now I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt a resolution two zero two zero dash two one approving the Legato Metro Districts number one through seven and IGA. And Councilwoman Grimes?
I'd like to make a motion, uh, let me find it, uh, make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-one approving the Legato Metro Districts numbers one through seven and the IGA.
Thank you. Councilman Hearst?
Second?
A motion in a second to adopt a resolution two zero two zero dash two one approving Legato Metropolitan Districts number one through seven and the intergovernment agreement. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request, I'll make my comments. Um, I'm going to vote in opposition of approving this resolution and the Metro and the service plan at this time. There are a couple of items on there that I'm not comfortable with. Uh, one of them is the language surrounding the Gallagherization of the mill levy. Um, although it is possible that the mill levy can be adjusted whenever the residential assessment rate is lowered based on the commercial property value in the state of Colorado. There's nothing in there that makes it to where it has to be a requirement to do so. Um, they basically have the option to lower that whether they need to or not. And that's especially concerning whenever that shows up on the operations and maintenance mill levy. So if the language were a little more strict to state that they need to in order to meet their obligations for debt limit, for debt repayment, as well as for operations and maintenance costs, then I can understand the need to Gallagherize. But just giving them want and ability to adjust it just because that residential assessment rate goes down is not enough in my book. I've seen districts here in Commerce City that have adjusted their mill levy without having to need to just because they had the ability to. And I think that that's a disservice to the residents and so I will not vote in favor of a service plan that allows that to take place. Any other comments regarding this item before we take a vote? Okay, once again, I have a motion in a second to adopt a resolution two zero two zero dash two one approving Legato Metropolitan District number one through seven and the IGA. Will the city clerk, you need to read the title?
Yes, sir, I do.
Please read the title and take a roll call vote.
Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-one.
One second, Councilman Hearst raised his hand at the last second.
Yeah, my fault. I, I meant to get it in there earlier than that. In response to the mayor's comments, is, you know, there's, there's obvious concerns about, a- a- and hence the reason why we jumped into investigating, uh, or, or asking Mr. Sheasley's office to investigate, um, metro districts within Commerce City. So the, the Gallar- that's a tough one, the Gallagherization of, of, of this obviously is in question in November, which, which raises some questions as to, you know, where this goes. But is that something that can even be considered at this point in the creation? Um, uh, and I'm not questioning why, uh, the mayor is calling this out. You know, just like a man in, um, land development code cases, uh, you know, is it something we can even consider when voting for this? And I, and I'm asking Mr. Sheasley, please.
In short, yes. Um, the council permits, uh, there are communities that I believe don't permit mill levy adjustments. Um, we do have a definition of mill levy adjustments if I just count on page six of the proposed service plan that talks about, when the, the mill levy would adjust, um, and, and that, that single definition encapsulated. But it allows, uh, the mill levy to be increased or decreased to reflect, um, those changes based on Gallagher. But does require, and I would say it's a fairly lax standard that the, the city, though, could challenge, that the board for the district determine, uh, that those need to be changed in good faith. Um, but there's a lot of discretion, uh, for the board within that. But attempting to create, uh, the tax revenues remaining equal.
Uh, I, I appreciate that explanation. I guess I, I probably misphrased my question. Um, it was more along the lines of, as long as this, uh, service plan meets our master service plan agreement, uh, do we have the ability to deny it, um, being that it, it meets all of our requirements?
In, in short, yes. Uh, every development is, is different. Um, and while we do have a model service plan that is negotiated, um, however, um, and, and developed with interests that council's raised over the last couple of years in mind, um, every presentation and can be different, though.
Yeah, because, you know, from my, to my final comments is, you know, the, the, the questions that were asked tonight, you know, was, I thought, in detail, gone over by the original developer when Legato was first, uh, brought, brought to our attention. So the buffer zone at the, um, you know, between the landfill and the residential was in detail discussed and what type of tree line they were going to be installing. So I feel, I feel like we, we asked some questions again that were reiterated and we did a good job there. I think everybody's, um, a- a- and I don't want to speak for everybody, but there's, there's always this uneasiness around new, uh, metro districts after we've seen what's happened, uh, when they are in full control of the developer. And, uh, I think what everybody's looking for here is, you know, nobody has a crystal ball that can say the first five people that join Metro District Two are going to run for the board and, you know, now it's going to be homeowner-controlled and everything's going to be fine and dandy. But, but there, but everybody is concerned about, you know, there are several commercial districts here. Who's going to be running those? How are they going to affect their neighbors? Um, you know, what we are trying to avoid, just to be very frank, is, uh, developer control even after they've finished the project out and have very little interest in staying. Um, we've seen that in other places where, um, you know, the development may be ninety percent built out, but only has one, one resident on the board and it's still controlled with a large majority by the developer and, uh, some questionable decisions have been made. And so really for me, what I would be looking at is, you know, some type of, um, commitment or plan to how we can avoid, you know, those types of things in the future. I- in my hope in questioning, uh, Rob, you know, with you, Robert, is, you know, is there something that's going to protect residents from that in the future? And, you know, that's long-winded, but I just wanted to make sure that my opinion is, this is a good development, you know, i- i- we can continue to move forward with it, but we do need to answer some long-term questions about financial viability and those who are going to be living there, um, not getting stuck with a long-term tax burden that, you know, kind of outlives the value of their house. And so, um, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. Correct me if I'm wrong, mayor, but I think that's where some of your concerns come come from, you know, about asking the questions on. If commercial doesn't materialize, now you have a higher tax levy against the residents that bought in the residential districts to pay off those. Those bonds because. You know, if you're if you're asking me, I understand why you can't cover one hundred and sixteen million dollars upfront and still be an affordable house on the market. Or even be able to compete in the market. So I understand why the Metro District bonds are required. But we're worried about how they're going to be paid back and the burden of the next forty years on anybody that moves there.
Thank you. Mr. Tinklinberg, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir. Thank you, mayor. Basically, it's a comment and a question. One of the options that Mr. Burgeley laid out for council is that you can approve it with conditions. And so regarding the Gallagherization. My understanding of Gallagherization is that you can change the mill levy in order to keep the revenue at the same level. Which would mean that a homeowner would not be paying additional tax, even though the mill levy has increased. Is that correct? Can you confirm that, please?
I can confirm that, sir. Yes, that is correct.
So although that is the intention of that, I don't see that clearly stated within the paragraph, which is my objection to the way that it is written right now. I understand the reason why you would want to. My. Heartburn with it is, you know, back in twenty seventeen, we had a very large valuation increase. And the mill, the residential assessment rate went from seven point nine six to seven point two zero. We have districts that went out there and Gallagherized their mill levy just because of the reduction in the residential assessment rate. Even though the purpose or the reason that everybody saw that was because of very large valuation increase. Homes in the area were seeing twenty five to thirty five to even forty and fifty percent valuation increases over what they were before. So with that valuation increase, most homes were kicking in more money at the lower assessment rate than they would have been had they not yet. Metro districts still took it upon themselves to go off and Gallagherize their mill levy like that. From Terra Village, actually, one of theirs actually was was one of the players that took that action as well. So. I'm not seeing protections within the verbiage that says we will Gallagherize if it. Requires it in order to maintain the same level is where my objection comes to it.
It is in there, sir. If I if I may screen share the language in the service plan, that that specific language is in there. So if you look right here, it says so that to the extent the actual revenues generated are neither diminished nor enhanced. So it's not allowed to be adjusted just to increase revenue. It's only to stay revenue neutral. Now, the situation we had in twenty seventeen with the reassessment year where values went up. Along with the Gallagher adjustment year is a unique storm of events and we saw that coming, but. Those Gallagher adjustment calculations done by the accountants aren't allowed just to bring in more revenue. And that's what the specific language says in your model service plan, that it can neither be diminished nor enhanced, meaning neutral.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Can you give me the paragraph and section of that?
So I'm in page two. It's under definitions, which is section one, and the definition is mill levy adjustment. It's not numbered. It's near the bottom of page two of the service plan.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out to me. I did not see that in the beginning. I was looking down towards the bottom of the. Area where we were discussing Gallagherization. So thank you for that. I will remove my objection to approving this service plan based on that. Any other discussion? Seeing none, will the city clerk please read the title and take a roll call vote?
Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty one, resolution approving the consolidated service plan for the Legato Metropolitan Districts numbers one through seven in the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Commerce City and the Legato Metropolitan District numbers one through seven in case M D dash one one seven dash one nine. Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
No.
Councilmember Noble.
No.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
No.
Passes six I and three N A.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda are resolutions. First up is resolution two zero two zero dash three four. Approving selection of House Hill Levine to provide updates to the master plan. This resolution was continued from the June fifteen twenty twenty meeting. I would like to invite Jenny Axsmacher, city planner, to make the presentation.
Mayor Hughesman, give me just one moment to move everybody over, please. All right, Jenny, you should be moved over. Is there anybody else you would like moved over at this point before the presentation happens?
Thank you, Dylan. I believe we're set for right now.
Okay, perfect.
Are you able to see my screen?
We are, yes, Jenny.
Great. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council. For your consideration, tonight is resolution twenty twenty dash thirty four. This resolution authorizes the interim city manager to sign a professional services agreement with House Levine Associates. For updates to the comprehensive plan, transportation plan, economic development strategic plan, and parks, recreation, and golf master plan. This agreement is not to exceed seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So let's review a little bit about each of these plans quickly and why they need to be updated. So what is a comprehensive plan? It's a long range policy document that establishes the vision of what the community wants to be. It informs land use decisions, areas for reinvestment, and employment growth. Why do we plan to facilitate the growth and development of the city? To develop a community vision, to encourage economic growth, and to protect environmentally sensitive lands. How do we use the plan? It provides goals to achieve. It gives city baseline data. It describes the history of the community and details a plan for future land use. These plans are generally updated every seven to ten years to keep the information current and useful. A little bit about the update process. An R F P was issued last summer to find a consultant to complete the four plan updates. A consultant was selected in late twenty nineteen by a team, including representatives from all the impacted city departments, including the city manager's office. And the goal is to have all plans updated by the end of twenty twenty two. So why is the update needed? Separate plans created independently don't always align. We're looking for an increased focus to implement sustainability goals, and we need a detailed fiscal impact analysis. But let's talk about a specific benefit to plan updates and a return on investment. So an example of a return on investment for the plan update can be seen through. Maybe employment development in the E four seventy quarters corridor. Specifically, let's look at the D I A Tech Center or Nexus Development. Without the twenty ten comprehensive plan and transportation plans, there was no cohesive vision for that area and no land set aside within the E four seventy corridor for. Employment centers or job creation specifically. Most of the development interest in the area at that time was for residential development. The twenty ten plan established a future land use area for D I A technology development. That in turn helped shape forty six million dollars of investment through permit valuation fees. In employment center and job creation where it might not otherwise have occurred. Based on the four hundred some thousand dollars invested in that twenty ten. Master comp plan and transportation plan, that return on investment is over a hundred and five dollars per dollar spent on the plants. The city also collects around three quarters of a million in tax revenue in this area. And this is just a small example of the financial benefits to having these plans updated. We also hope to gain efficiencies by updating all the city master plans together. So for the transportation master plan, why do we need to update it? Because we have growth and congestion in the northern range. We have substantial population growth throughout the city. Potential impacts from fast tracks and anticipated funding challenges and opportunities. So I just spoke about how plan updates can generate investment resulting in job creation and revenue. So now I'd like to give you an example of how not updating the master plans could potentially cost the city. There are a hundred and fifty nine million dollars worth of roadway projects that are currently incorrectly prioritized within our current transportation master plan. Meaning these projects are higher in priority than is what is noted in the plan. There's also an additional forty million dollars in projects that aren't included in the current transportation master plan. While the city can attempt to apply for grants to cover the costs of these projects. The lack of concurrency with the master plans will make it extremely hard to be successful, especially for those projects that aren't even listed and will result in the city having to pay for those projects. So why do we need an update to the E D master plan to evaluate the impacts from the recent pandemic, to acknowledge E four seventy shovel ready sites? To incur incorporate regional air tropolis efforts, explore T O D opportunities with the fast track station, and to consider the additional residential growth within the city. For the Parks Recreation and Golf Master Plan, there are currently four different plans governing all of these different areas, and a new consolidated plan is needed for guiding the present and future. As well as to reflect today's community. These plans also need to be updated because the market has changed over ten years. The world is also changing rapidly since March due to the pandemic, which has led to budget concerns. But it's also provided an opportunity to have cutting edge data and plans that react to these changes. The city also runs the risk of being at a competitive disadvantage to our neighboring jurisdictions who do have updated plans. The consultant staff is recommending for this contract is House Levine. They have extensive master planning experience, and while they are located in Chicago, they have done quite a bit of work locally. They have frequently been recognized for their work, most recently by the Colorado Chapter of the American Planning Association for their twenty nineteen comprehensive plan for the city of Aurora. Here's a few sample pages from that Aurora plan. Staff liked that the plan was graphically intensive, using maps, tables, and charts more than large blocks of text, and we think this approach makes the plan more usable for the entire community. Staff is also recommending House Levine because of their innovative approach to outreach, while the new comprehensive plan update specifically will utilize many of the methods. That were also employed in the twenty ten plan update, such as in person meetings, once they're deemed safe. Posters, flyers, and surveys. The new update will also leverage trending, innovative, and immersive civic engagement methods to broaden our reach to the community. House Hill Levine has had success implementing social media, new digital media platforms, and other methods that have drastically changed the engagement landscape. To achieve an open exchange of ideas and positive outcomes. These are innovative methods that are proven to be successful in informing and engaging the community while also keeping costs down. As an example, the Aurora plan efforts resulted in feedback in six different languages and reached over three thousand two hundred people. They also received over eight hundred online survey responses, and staff is confident this will be a community driven planning effort. House Levine is plans to partner with several subcontractors to help complete all four plans. One of these language access will provide bilingual translation services for the outreach. The total budget for the project is seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars with three hundred for the comprehensive plan, two hundred for the transportation plan. Sixty seven thousand dollars for the E D plan and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Parks Rec and Golf Plan. It's important to note that these funds will be expended. Excuse me. Over multiple years with approximately ten percent or seventy five thousand in twenty twenty, fifty three percent or three hundred and seventy seven thousand in twenty twenty one. And the remainder thirty seven percent or two hundred and sixty five thousand in twenty twenty two. The funds for the plan update will come from approved appropriations from the city's capital improvement and preservation plan. The Parks Plan funding comes from lottery dollars as well as grant funds, and these funds can't be used for anything other than the Parks Plan update. There's also a small healthy places grant as well. Should council authorize the contract, the comp plan would kick off in October. Staff would then be looking for council assistance and establishing a citizens advisory committee. There would be an elected officials round table in the fall with the creation of a project charter. The subsequent plans would kick off a bit later with all the plan updated completed by the end of twenty twenty two. With that, staff is happy to answer any questions that you have, and so you're aware, we have one of the principals and co-founders of House Hill Levine, John Houseill. He's also available to answer any questions, particularly if you'd like to hear about the success. They've been having with outreach during the pandemic, which I knew came up at last week's study session. There are also representatives from any of the other city departments participating in the planet dates. Thank you.
Any questions for staff on this item? Councilwoman Grimes.
Thank you for your presentation, Jenny. Just wanted to, I think that we've talked about this before, but just wanted to confirm. The bidding process for the selection of the firm that you're proposing tonight and. Just a little bit of background on that quickly as a refresher, if you don't mind.
Yes, Councilwoman, I'd be happy to share that. We issued an R F P in July of twenty nineteen. We received responses from five different organizations. We eliminated one initially because they only proposed to bid on the comprehensive plan, not all four master plans. We conducted interviews of all the remaining four participants. The interview panel included representatives from the city manager's office, the Parks and Rec Department, the Public Works Department, Community Development, as well as Communications. And the selection of the consultant is based on the votes of those committee members.
Councilwoman Noble.
Thanks very much. Thank you for your presentation. When we spoke about this at the study session, one of the things we was we were looking at were the. Implementation of the twenty ten comprehensive plan, which was mostly fifty percent. In some cases, it went up to a score of seven out of ten, and in other cases, it was a one, such as greenhouse gases and so forth. That none of that got accomplished during the past ten years. I'd also like to point out that for this money, we're pretty much landlocked in terms of what's available to us. So this is pretty expensive if you look at it. And that people are fairly preoccupied right now with things other than. What their future is going to look like. Their future is more immediate. Are we going to survive? How are we going to make money? How can we keep our home? When I participated in one of these plans before, one of the processes, there were twenty five people on the advisory panel. And we not only met monthly, we met weekly with the planner to talk about it. Each council member appointed five people to the panel. It was very representative. With the full range from staunch environmentalists to. Active developers, a full range. It was really a pretty fascinating experience to be on. I am concerned about the limiting of this advisory committee to only fifteen people and that they will meet quarterly according to the contract. I really want to see this citizen driven, not staff driven. And I am concerned that the contract reads right now as if it is. Staff driven in terms of the plans. Can you address that, please?
Certainly, it might actually be more beneficial to let John Houseill speak to how their engagement makes the the plan community driven as opposed to. Me answering that. So can we bring John over, please?
Yes, I will promote him to panelist right now. John, you're now a panelist, so you should be able to enable your webcam and unmute your microphone.
How's that? Can everybody see me?
Yep, we can see you and hear you, John.
Even better. Well, good evening, and thank you so much for having me here. It's an exciting time as we consider the kicking off of this project. Councilmember Noble, to answer your question about citizen involvement. This plan, I couldn't agree with you more. Our entire business model and process model is built on a sense of establishing a sense of community stewardship. At the end of this process, it's not a House Hill Levine plan. No disrespect to anybody who's here. It's not the city council's plan or the plan commission or the steering committee's plan. It has to be a plan of the community, the residents. The stakeholders, the business owners and operators, the people who live and work and visit in Commerce City. If the plan isn't a reflect. If the plan isn't a reflection and built on a foundation of their input, it simply will not work over time. So we don't even adhere to the notion of getting people to quote unquote buy in. Because to me that even seems coerced. So we try to sense and still a sense of community stewardship. We have a very robust outreach program throughout the entire program. It is casting a very wide net from one on one interviews to large groups to small groups. To grassroots efforts done entirely by people without the consultant or staff even present. So they can conduct their own workshops, online, face to face, virtual, you name it. We have to be fluid, especially at a time of social distancing. Things will likely change and be variable over the course of the next year or two. But the bottom line is that every step of the process. We reach out to and try to get feedback, feedback from the entire community. There are different points in the process. Where is it a bit more heavy? But we make sure we have consensus on one step before we go to the next step. So while staff is one of the touchpoints. We have a technical advisory committee, a citizen advisory committee, we have roundtables with city council and plan commission. We have neighborhood workshops, do it yourself workshops they do by themselves. We're going to be producing things with our sub consultant. Translating written and narrative into Spanish to again maintain as much outreach as possible. We will be having a staff working group. We will also have regional coordination with your other agencies and partners within the Denver greater regional area. So it's very robust and very multifaceted. It will not be staff driven. It will not be a small group driven, it will be reflective of the entire community. It's tough to get an entire community in the room at any one given time. So by doing this method, we can reach out to the community strategically and through it throughout the process. Touching point that expertise at key points along the way to make sure we're on track. So I couldn't agree with your sentiments more. It has got to be built on feedback from the community. If it's not, it will not be successful. So.
Then that simply underscores my concern about the contract. The working, the staff working group. Versus the citizens advisory group. The staff working group meets monthly or more frequently it allows in the contract. And the citizen advisory group only meets quarterly. And the only reason I bring this up is that when two of us were on a focus group, were appointed to a focus group last year. And I would say that out of. There were nine of us on the focus group. Maybe. One or two people missed one meeting, but. There was real dedication among the people who were actually appointed to it. And we have a difficult time getting people to show up for town halls or. You know, engage otherwise or, you know, speak at city council meetings or whatever the case might be. But if people are appointed or have a bigger role to play or understand that they have a role to play in designing this, then they have. They then represent and have a commitment to representing their community. For what will be the future of Commerce City and the desired future for Commerce City. That's who I want to see doing this. And when I read the contract, I don't see it that way, Mr. Halsey. I'm sorry. I say that with all due respect, but I really don't read it that way.
Okay, and I guess what I can say is through the website and through other means, people are heard throughout the process. We've done a hunt probably more comprehensive plans than any other firm in the country. And it probably won more awards specifically for outreach than most other firms in the country. There is a thing called outreach burnout. We have worked in some communities where they set up monthly meetings for some of this. And typically or often throughout the plan, those monthly meetings fall by the wayside. We're also trying to, and they are done less frequently. We do a lot of work in between meetings and we want to make sure that when people do meet, whether it's staff. Or the advisory committee or the citizens or the technical committee. Or we engage the public at a workshop or a focus group or a series of events. We want to make sure it's very impactful. We want to make sure it's very meaningful. Where people don't feel as though they're meeting for the sake of meeting. So. I I think that all I can say is after twenty plus years of doing this. We have come to a rhythm of back and forth engagement that we think is incredibly effective. It's why we win so many outreach awards. We try not to burn out the community or even volunteers in engagement. If there's a desire as we go through this to meet more frequently or to have other engagement opportunities because something may not be effective. And we want to recalibrate along the way, we've done that as well. But this is a process that has been developed and refined and we have found it to be extremely effective. And at the end, people is feel as though they've had every opportunity to participate. So I. I guess based on our years of experience, that's why our process is developed the way it is. So I I hear your concerns. But I can assure you that through our process. Everybody who would like to be heard will be and listen to and responded to and respected and involved to the extent that they would like to be.
Is that all you have, Ms. Noble?
Yeah, I also wondering. Whether we could bifurcate this agreement and do the comprehensive plans. Comprehensive plan now for the three hundred thousand. And do the other four hundred and something thousand on the plans. At a later date. We haven't had our, you know, there's, we haven't gotten what I have asked for a few times. Knowing exactly where we stand financially because of COVID. And where we might need to shift money around. And I think that that would be a fiscally responsible thing to do at this point.
Get a staff want to respond to that? Is it possible to shift the scheduling and everything else around?
Thank you, Mayor. Jason Rogers, Community Development Director. One thing I would like to just, once again, just briefly re note for what Jenny brought up. The project is currently staggered over a period of two, three years in which the. Actual initiation of the additional master plans are stepped. She discussed that briefly again, so just kind of make, put that out there. Obviously, there's always an opportunity to decouple. The comprehensive plan from the master plans, obviously. In my professional opinion, as I think the staff will share is that you start to create some inconsistencies and lack of harmony and then obviously. You have certain land use decisions that are just driving certain transportation investments, funding and or decisions which may not be able to pivot in or respond accordingly. So there are concerns with that. And often at the same time, we would have to work with our selected vendor. As to its desire to work with us on decoupling the comprehensive plan from the remaining master plans and. Obviously, that's a, that's a discussion that has not been had.
The comprehensive planned process can also drive what master plans are important. And the master plans are part of this agreement based on. Are not based upon the results of the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Member. Thank you, Councilmember Noble. I would respectfully offer that in staff's, I'll say initial audit. In review of undertaking the RFP had identified what were. I I would say the strategic plans in order to ensure a comprehensive approach to improving the transportation. Necessary infrastructure, the amenities for both recreational golf and parks for our step, for our residents and. For our corporate citizens, additionally, how to further our corporate citizenship. With employment and economic development opportunities with the EV strategic plan. And then obviously with the comprehensive plan in and of itself. So that initial due diligence as to what the comprehensive plan would spur was done prior to that RFP being. Put out on the street back in twenty nineteen.
Maybe residents would like a sustainability master plan alone. We had the conversation about Suncor earlier. What can we be doing as the city of Commerce City? As leaders in this arena so that we aren't reliant on. Things that are refined by companies like Suncor. That might be a result of the. Comprehensive plan process. If we bifurcate now, council members, then. We will know what master plan should be developed in the future.
And if I may respectfully offer as well, again, Mayor and rest of city council. If you look at the scope of work, we do clearly define sustainability. As a core theme and component as the development of a comprehensive plan and I would ask Mr. Hauseel if you could. Further expand upon that. It is in my experience and possibly yours as well. That a sustainability component or strategy is inherent or a, or a fixture of your comprehensive planning aspect. As it is intertwined in weave within a number of these other master plans that we are also trying to accomplish and achieve.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely right. The, the trend over the last. Seven, eight years has been less towards standalone sustainability plans because they can be ignored. As documents or as policy as opposed to integrating a theme of sustainability best practices throughout all of your planning documents. So in the transportation plan, there is how you do transportation planning as sustainable as possible. In your parks and recreation and golf plan, how to be as sustainable as possible in your land use, in your community facilities. In all in your new development approaches. If we, if sustainability is a theme that goes through all of your doc documents and it is one of your foundational principles or core values. The trend has been a debt has been a more effective way to instill sustainability best practices in all of your master plans. As opposed to creating a standalone or siloed sustainability plan document. So that's the trend we've seen. We have proposed addressing sustainability as a core theme in the comprehensive plan. So that it literally threads through everything that we do, not as a separate document, but as an integral part of every document.
Thank you. Councilman Hurst.
Yeah, so it's of my opinion that we, we have to do all three at once together. And the reason, the reason I refer to that is because I've been, it's my job intimately involved. With the statewide transportation plan, with the statewide freight plan, statewide rail plan, that that's. Part of what I do as the manager of the freight opposite C dot. And I see the value in doing them congruently at the same time. I've also seen. You know, we're, we're talking about this outreach burnout. I've seen. I've seen that from all parties involved in the statewide plan. Obviously, we're talking about a different scope when you're talking about every county in the state. Compared to one, you know, one city, but. I would, I would just like to see in the contract, you know, you know, as we're agreeing to, to how we're going to pursue these plans, a little bit of flexibility to allow organic. You know, development of community outreach, meaning, you know. If this month at the very beginning, we feel like we need six meetings in a row once a week to get started, really gain traction. You know, and and move forward with the, with the process, but then after those six weeks, you know, some of the actual. Document creation and things like that happen. And you start, you know, changing those that that meeting rhythm to every two weeks or something that's agreed upon by the group that that's participating. I would love to see that, you know. I I also, you know, would be, I heard a little bit of this, but would be interested in hearing, you know, your guys' adaptation to current, current situation. Obviously, COVID nineteen has changed the way public outreach has happened. And in some cases, we're getting a, you know, ten to fifteen times more. Public input than we had in the past, you know, so. In in some ways, you know, people are definitely dealing with other issues in their life just due to the times that we're living in. In other ways, some people find themselves having more time to participate in their local government. And and so just learning how you guys anticipate adapting to this would be an interest of mine. You know, we have seen presentations here on council where we've had some virtual rooms. And in my opinion. For me, those actually do better than the in person because you can take your time, really dive into the materials, do some research alongside it. And move on. And so I'd be interested in that. You know, when we talk, just to talk about, you know, specific parts of the plan. You know, I I really think part of this plan and part of what I'm looking for in the plan is also educating. You know, everybody involved, the public, city council staff on, you know. The ways that we actually can go about getting things done. You know, a lot of people talk about sustainability. But also you can look at the national renewable energy labs. You know, findings on moving trucks to electric, heavy duty trucks to electrification and the power grid associated, associated with doing that. So yes, everybody's final goal may be, you know, for Commerce City with seventy two trucking companies to move to electrification of trucks. But what we don't understand is that one trucking company. If they went full electric will require more energy demand than our entire city right now. And so if you quantify that by just say five large trucking companies in Commerce City. We would have to have about eight times the power demand that we currently sit on today. And so how do we get there? How do we work with our community, you know, other agency partners to get to something like that? And I think if we don't put that on paper for a ten year master plan and we, we don't include those ways towards sustainability over the next ten years. Then we're going to be behind the ball as we take our issues to Dr. Cog, to NADA, to all the other, you know, transportation and planning. Groups that we're involved with because we are going to be matching our, you know. Outdated plan, if you will, with some, you know, very up to date and very ambitious plans that our neighboring communities currently have and have already presented. Now I understand there's a hundred question marks about, you know. Where our budget's going to be in the next three years. And quite honestly, we're not going to know those answers for probably six to eight more months, just by the way the tax cycle works. And so. Continuing to delay this process concerns me because we will then be behind the ball and will be in a situation. That we frequently complain about, about being left behind, but part of being left behind is not being prepared to move when it's ready to move. And so. I think the. Master plan really helps us move in directions when opportunities arise, allows us to be more opportunistic to. Approve and kind of market new development. And so for me. I I think, you know, providing all three at once is a big endeavor. It's, it's costly, but I think as we heard before. We had about a hundred and twelve dollar per dollar spent return on investment. I think that's what the number was that. We were given in the earlier presentation. So, you know, to me, it seems like our return on investment is, is absolutely worth it for our community. And and, you know, really what the guy would ask is just for organic change as we work through. COVID nineteen and and, you know, the, the outcome to our budget with that, we will definitely have to be. Very organic and allow for changes as we find out where we, where we are for the next three to five years.
Thank you, Councilmember Hurst. If I may, John, if you don't mind expounding as well. I I do believe in the scope of work identified that there would be the creation of a citizen participation plan. That would outline a, like, once again, an immersive and very broad reaching approach to engaging our community. Now, obviously, within ninety days, if I'm not mistaken, within the contract as well. That that Susan participation plan will have to be delivered to the city and agreed upon to those tactics. Obviously, once we're out of the gate and running. But maybe you can expand upon that a little bit more. So from your perspective, how that kind of comes together in addressing Councilmember Hurst's request.
Yeah, absolutely. First, Councilmember Hurst was really spot on for a number of things. Your. Articulation of the interrelatedness between transportation, transit, freight, land use development, economic development, livability. You can't divorce these systems from one another. You can't. And there are real advantages to looking at these things at the same time and mutually developing them side by side. So I I applaud your, your sort of step back lens of what a city system truly is because you're spot on. With regard to outreach. We never presume to have outreach one hundred percent nailed down at the beginning of a two year plus process. It's impossible. If you think you can, you're kidding yourself. You have to be nimble, you have to be responsive. What works really well in one community. What works really well in one community a year in might not work in another community. And you have to have the ability to pivot. Uh you have to have the ability uh to recalibrate what is most effective for Commerce City. We don't know that at the beginning. We cast a really wide net and we throw a lot of different things out there. It's why we're so effective. One of the things that we did in Flint, Michigan, or Aurora, Colorado, if you will, we did this do-it-yourself workshop kit and we trained a host of local residents. We called it a local outreach team, LOT. Uh and we trained people on how to do workshops. We gave them all the materials, the questionnaires, how to be a facilitator. We had people do it in Korean, three different African dialects, Spanish. Uh city staff from every department participated and city staff on their own and volunteers on their own went out into the community and did these workshops with kits we designed for anybody and everybody who wanted to do one. It was incredibly effective. In Flint, Michigan, they did six hundred of these. City staff did. Um, so sometimes you can come up with creative approaches that aren't hamstrung by the fiscal realities of the budget limitations of a project. You can find other ways to engage people that are very, very cost-effective and grassroots. So um uh to Mr. Rogers' uh point, uh we are required to submit an outreach and engagement framework plan or plan within ninety days of contracting for city approval, which will outline everything that we plan on doing. And in that document, to get to uh Councilmember Hurst, some of what you talked about and some of what Councilmember Noble talked about, we can put in their contingencies if we had to recalibrate to be more effective and impactful, doing certain things, working with staff and working with the city and working with the citizen advisory committee. Uh because maybe collectively, a year down the road, we can come up with a way of engaging that we didn't anticipate now. Um, we have to be fluid because of COVID. We have no choice. Uh but we have found, uh Councilmember Hurst, some to what you said, in some communities, participation has gone up. Uh and we'll have uh two hundred people in a combination Zoom, Facebook Live, mutual interactive workshop where people are raising their hands across the entire community. We had a hundred and some odd people participate in El Paso County across a twenty-one-hundred-square-mile study area. Um, and it was really remarkably effective. Uh so there's a lot of different things we can do uh to engage people online. Uh but I would I I would reinforce the fact, just like after two thousand and eight and the market crash or recalibration. Uh we're at a unique time uh in America where people are rethinking what is a livable community. They're rethinking what is a resilient economic neighborhood center or an economic thriving local economy for a city. Um, and now is the time, I think, to position yourself to come out of this ready to go, ready to guide development, lure development, get that next employer, prop up entrepreneurs and mom and pops, recruit the next Fortune one hundred company to locate their world headquarters in Commerce City. That stuff is done by the work you do when it's toughest to do it, not when the economy and everything is hitting stride. So I think now is the exact time uh to pick up the ball and try to do these at the same time to coordinate your effort to maximize impact, so. But uh to Mr. Rogers' comments, we are required by contract to submit an outreach plan within ninety days of contracting to get city agreement on that outreach plan. And if we had to recalibrate and do something more creative or build in flexibility, we can do that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Greens?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my question is more for staff. I'm just curious, you know, if we're going to spend this much money to do an update on all of our plans, how do we ensure that we're, A, we have the budget to execute on the plans that we um end up with in a couple of years? And then B, how do we actually execute on um making the things happen that are in the plan? Um, you know, assuming that we have the budget to do them. How do we track that? And how do we how do we make sure that we're actually implementing uh versus just receiving a really nice plan and then not necessarily meeting the metrics or um executing on the things that we've received all this feedback on?
Thank you, Councilmember Greens. So let me unpack the number of questions that you proposed, and I'll start with the first one. Uh, the seven hundred seventeen thousand proposed for being able to update the comprehensive plan and the associate master plans is currently appropriated within the CIPP budget. So the money is there. The money has been put aside in being able to move forward with all of the of all of the identified plans. Um, I will go forward and I will share this with you. It is my philosophy as uh as it relates being a a a polyat planer. I I want to be able to create, once again, aspirational goals, objectives, and tied to policies to help to guide uh the myriad of land use, transportation, and other amenity-based approaches. But you need to be able to have tangible performance metrics and be able to demonstrate that you are actually staying the course along that roadmap. If not, that allows you then to be able to make uh adjustments and or to pivot so that you're back on course, right? Staying with it, staying on the rails. Now, to that, once you get past the comp plan, if you may remember from uh the study session session, the study session last Monday, we showed you a pyramid. That pyramid really kind of shows where you go from that high-level vision roadmap to a very detailed implementation into the built environment. So starting with your land, starting with your your comprehensive plan, it then goes into your specific area plans, right? Your stamp, uh your stationary master plan, your derby, your ironed out, things that get into a very much more specific geographic demographic assessment. And once again, fine tuning on those land use and or transportation strategies so that you're actually able to accomplish certain goals. You then move forward with going into your land development code. The things that guide both from a land use perspective, what's permitted, what's prohibited or not permitted and or allowed through discretionary approval of a condition used for it, tie to various bulk dimensional standards. That guide what it'll look like when it comes into the built environment. You then get into the city, the city council's work plan. Now, this work plan is just not focused on what we do in community development, but is broad-reaching. Uh if you think through some of the items that have been identified in the work plan of over the past year and or going forward, can have a baseline tie into your comp plan. Remember, that comp plan is your backbone in which you start to build a number of different both programmatic, operational, and project-based um, I'll say identified goals that are able to be achieved on that ground level in that day-to-day. Then you start getting into, once again, that private activation of developers bringing those various land uses that have been identified and wanting to move those forward and take that through the built invertible environment. So there's a number of different tactics and strategies, both internal to what we do operationally, broad brush across multiple departments, but also what we promote and how we attract and how we work with the development community to be able to bring that private investment. And being able to have performance metrics to demonstrate how it ties back and how we're moving that forward and or having to adjust and having to pivot.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Rogers. I appreciate the feedback. It it does help some. Um, I still have hesitations, but but definitely understand the the need for the update. Um, and and appreciate all the information. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Tingleberg.
I was just going to add to uh what Mr. Rogers said. It uh takes buy-in from the city council and dedication uh and commitment by the city council as well. Because if city council ignores the the comprehensive plan, then staff is going to do what city council directs. And and so we we need to have council engagement in the process and buy-in to the plan so that there's discipline to stick to that plan.
That's really good feedback. Thank you, Mr. Tingleberg.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Yes, uh thank you for providing tonight's presentation and um John for the updates. Um, I just wanted to state a few things because, you know, I'm real hesitant right now due to the situation with the COVID um which occurred in this, starting this year. Um, and a comprehen- comprehensive plan is like a need-based study. Um, and and that will determine, you know, if other studies need to be completed. The citizens should have been the ones to pick the company based on what the needs are, is what I feel. And then we just did a five projects in five years and we have to pay back one percent sales tax. So I just feel like it's it's a little too early. And, you know, that's just how I feel because of the hesitant. Um, and then I was curious also, um, John, what other current projects are you working on currently now?
Myself or our firm or?
Firm, yes, I'm sorry, your firm, uh huh.
Well, we're we're working on, I don't know, projects, different projects across the United States. Um, uh, we're probably eighty percent of the way through a comprehensive master plan for El Paso County, Colorado, uh down by uh Colorado Springs and Black Forest, that area. Um, we've started a project in Canyon City, which is about forty miles uh west of Colorado Springs. Uh, we've got a couple of people in our office that are working on a project, Wake Forest in North Carolina. Um, I was at a Zoom Plan Commission public hearing earlier today with another coworker for the adoption of a comprehensive plan in South Carolina. So there's a variety of projects. We've got a pretty good size where we got about twenty planners. Um, again, we don't have architects. We don't have engineers. We don't have, if we need those people, we team with them. Um, but we've got, I think, fourteen AICP planners, two FAICP planners, and a staff of about twenty-two people. Um, so we've got a variety of projects across the United States at varying degrees of completion. Uh like I said, one was adopted or public hearing approval today at the Plan Commission. So most comprehensive plans that we work on uh have a process period of anywhere from one to two to two and a half years is typical. Twelve to twenty-four months is a typical range, depending on the size of the city or the complexity of the city. Um, so that's just some of the projects that our firm is working on across the United States. Again, some are more recent, some are halfway through, some are eighty percent done, and some are uh just about wrapped up. So a variety of projects. We've been in operation for about sixteen years on my firm.
Okay, and did your firm find a plan um to get rid of the lead pipes um that was found in the study in Flint, Michigan?
Yeah, we did uh the Flint Master Plan and the Flint Zoning Ordinance about four years before the water debacle. And it was really a shame when that happened. Um, not to go down a road, but after we did our plan, they got and based off the plan, they got about four hundred and seventy million dollars or dollars worth of investment in their downtown because of some of the things the plan set the table for. They got about five hundred million dollars of investment in the campus area around uh the downtown. Uh what had happened uh in a nutshell uh with the water thing is a lot of people don't know this is some people's water bills were more than their mortgages. The water bills had gone up. Uh, they were huge numbers because the water infrastructure system for those engineers or infrastructure-minded folks on the call, uh the infrastructure was so poor and in such bad shape that about half the water they were buying from Detroit leaked out of or got stolen out of the system because the pipes were so leaky or people couldn't afford their bills, so they would break in and bust the meters. So they were losing about half the water they paid for. So the plan that they put into place a few years after we got done uh was to tap into the Flint River as a local water source versus buying their water from Detroit. So the plan was a very solid and strategic plan to get them off of the economic commitment uh and ties to Detroit water because they were going broke. But the problem was that it was a different water source and the pipes they used to get water from Detroit from the Flint River were not lined properly. So when the water came in from the Flint River to get processed, uh lead seeped in from the pipes they used to draw the water in from the Flint River. So the strategy was a wise strategy executed poorly by the local folks that did the infrastructure work or the firm they did to do the infrastructure work. But that's the story behind why they were pursuing getting water from the Flint River was to cut the commitment and the economic ties to being committed to paying bills to Detroit they could no longer afford to pay. That's sort of the backstory. So we worked there about four years before that happened. But interestingly enough, we put in place, we engaged over five thousand people in eighteen months in Flint. It was really remarkable, very successful. And we put in place such a communication protocol that several years later, when the water thing hit and they had to instantly start getting communication out to the neighborhoods, their course of action was to reactivate the comprehensive plan outreach protocol and network we put into place four years before because it was so effective. So they re-triggered that outreach protocol to re-engage people for the water crisis.
Thank you.
Great community. I, Flint is one of my favorite towns I've worked in.
Thank you, Councilman Wadiola.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I got a, just a, I guess this question is for staff. Is there any uh future uh planning for our departments to line up with our comprehensive plan if we do choose to do this?
Thank, I can add that one of the goals of the comprehensive plan update is to align the staff or the uh council work plan. And from that council work plan, staff goals and staff policies are set. I don't know if Mr. Rogers has anything to add to that.
Thank you. Uh, so I I I think a simple way of looking at this, Councilmember, is you have that trickle effect. Uh, once you kind of drop that pebble in the lake, you're going to see those ripple effects that'll go across um our department and other departments uh with a level of inspected review against, and I can only speak for myself, I will allow Joe to, Joe Wilson to speak for Public Works and so on. But uh I would see, I would foresee that once we have a better understanding about uh land use and other sustainable policies and or transportation policies, we're going to look at our land development code, which helps to guide and provide those rails based on bulk dimensional standards, what you can do, what you can't do based on zone districts. And it may uh further elaborate that we may want to include certain uh new zone districts to allow for that attraction and competitive nature or certain uses that we haven't been able to foresee to this point. Uh, I think interestingly enough, one of the things that you're able to do off of having a comp plan is be able to further build what I like to call green architecture, sustainable actual architectural measures within your land development code that feed off of your comp plan with now you're looking at how new development comes in and are able to achieve certain USGBC and or LEED standards as a minimum, but they're being based off of what was that policy direction that you received in your comp plan. So it allows for us to be able to go through that level of environmental audit as well for us to be able to build out on top of being able to achieve, once again, some of those competitive land uses that continue to build our high quality of life from a residential perspective, but also a job to employ resident ratio that is also high in nature um for being able to guide the growth of the city.
Well, thank you, and I hope uh the other departments, because I think it goes hand in hand. And, you know, we don't want to repeat of what happened to the other one where things fell through the cracks. Um, and uh I I agree with Roger, if we choose to do this, city council has to lead the way. Um, and it'll trickle down to the exec team, all the way down to our um our staff. Um, the other thing is, uh, you know, I I I asked a lot of questions last time and I was really hesitant about this plan. Um, but knowing that the money is there, right? We're not taking it from the general fund. Um, you know, it's in there. Uh, we can only use this money for a a variety of stuff. Um, and looking at, did a couple of my own research on other plans and what other cities used. Um, and what we're getting for, we're actually getting a really, really good deal. Uh Thornton just uh did theirs and it was just a regular comprehensive plan. We're doing four of them and they paid, I think it was like six hundred thousand or six hundred and twenty thousand, something around that. Um, so uh there's a couple of other cities not in Colorado, but we're doing, we're getting a really good deal um and the money's there because I was worried about the money. Uh, the outreach, uh, uh, John, you explained very well. That was my big concern, especially with our Latino population. Um, but knowing that you're going to be doing all that and knowing that we have an organization that actually helped Thornton with their comp plan and did a lot of outreach uh um with their comp plan. And I saw the scope of work that that organization, which is an uh Commerce City organization, did for Thornton. Um, was, so I know you guys are going to do all the interviews and and all that. And what you reassured the the points, um, the virtual, um, that kind of, I'm good with that. But I just think, you know, uh, we have to do it. I think what uh Mr. Rogers, what Craig was saying is this is the time. Um, it is a lot of money, um, but I think it's it's going to set us up for the next five to ten years. Um, and and it's 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 the time right now. And I do agree with Councilwoman Ellen Thomas and Noble, people, the pandemic. Um, but if we don't do it now, um, when is a good time, right? So that's all I got to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilwoman Greens?
Councilwoman Grimes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-four to authorize the city manager to sign a professional services agreement with Housel Levine Associates on behalf of the city for the comprehensive plan update, transportation plan update, economic development strategic plan update, and Parks, Rec, and Golf Master Plan.
Thank you. Have a motion to approve, uh, Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-four. Councilman Hurst.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-four, which is approve a selection of Housel Levine to provide updates to the master plan. Is there any discussion? Councilman Hurst.
Obviously, I support this, but one thing, you know, that I want to make clear, i- it, it kind of touches on what, um, what we were talking about from buying from the councils, you know? With this, I think all of us really have to put our heads together on how we're going to come together, support this, and pave the way for the next city council to produce and, and actually, um, act on this plan. Because seven hundred plus thousand dollars is an, is an incredible amount of money, no matter if we're in the middle of a pandemic or not. But again, if we can put, us and future councils can put and prioritize by using this plan, we can get a massive return on that investment. And so, you know, the community helping, helping develop this plan, being the integral part of developing this plan, is, is first and foremost, the, the most important thing about it. But then taking action and actually creating legislation, uh, approving projects, finding a, and, and fair revenue sources that are sustainable, that's our job. That's what we get elected to do. So taking this is our opportunity to invest in our community for the next ten years and set a standard and a vision on how city leadership will commit to making good on those plans that, that we build and develop with our community. So, uh, you know, that, that is kind of the challenge that we all have, is how do we do that appropriately? And so again, I support this and I really support all of us coming together as this plan develops to really uh, work together on making this the best plan, best plan possible, because even if we don't rerun or get re-elected or we're not on city council in two years from now, by all means, this should be the guiding light as to what to do next on how our community can move forward. And we can be confident that we did this with as much community input as we could. Um, and, and know that this is the voice that we all constantly kind of strive for. It is full-on community response and delivering those plans that the community wants it. So, uh, I, I, I obviously support this and, uh, excited to move forward with it.
Councilwoman Noble.
I have major reservations and I've made my reservations clear and at the last meeting of the study session and again, this evening. Um, unless the residents drive this, then it's doomed to failure and that's part of why the twenty-ten can't, didn't necessarily work is because everyone needs to stay engaged in it going forward. If the staff is driving this process, if the staff is saying, gee, I'd really like to have this, or I'd really like to have that, then we won't have the kind of buy-in that Councilmember Hurst is talking about. I agree, however, with Councilmember Guardiola. I think he made some excellent points. And I will, um, hold Mr. Housel to this, that you will do all you can to make certain that residents are driving this and that adjustments will be made and can be made more flexibly than the contract currently reads. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Will the city clerk please read the title and take a roll call vote?
Resolution twenty twenty dash three-four, resolution approving selection of Housel Levine Associates to provide updates to the city's master plan and subplans. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
No.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Guardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes eight to one.
Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is Resolution two zero two zero dash six-three, approving public art maintenance plan. Will Jody Hardy, Community Relations Manager, please make the presentation?
Good evening again, Mayor and members of city council. If I may, before we, um, jump into this public art maintenance plan presentation, uh, revisit the community survey presentation from earlier as I failed to receive direction from you all on the, uh, twenty-twenty community survey. Give me just a moment to share my screen here. So just looking back at the, uh, twenty-twenty community survey presentation that we saw earlier, um, if we are to move forward with this for twenty-twenty, um, the timeline for that would start in October, uh, take place October through November, wrap up in December with the results printed, uh, presented in, uh, twenty-twenty-one of next year. And the sampling for that, one thing that we are looking at doing this year is increasing uh, the number of surveys by doubling the amount of mailed surveys that would go out. So this is twice the amount from twenty-nineteen. And then again, the content, we would, uh, measure against the benchmarks from previous years. Um, and then also noted that we could add the, we have the ability to add those custom questions in there. So an example of that could be, uh, COVID-nineteen response related questions. Again, implementation, um, survey can be completed via direct mail, so mail to residence, website and social media. And then again, just some considerations for you, um, to think about is we did have, see some decrease, um, in levels of participation from twenty-eighteen to twenty-nineteen. Um, the opt-in survey is not always necessarily the best source of data. Um, and that COVID-nineteen has altered, uh, o- obviously city services this year and then may also have a negative impact um, on the feedback that we received. So it could certainly impact the data there. So just seeking direction to you, um, from you all. Um, do you all wish to move forward with a survey for this year, which would be our fourth one? Or do you want to delay this, uh, for this year, which would result in a budget savings of twenty-five thousand dollars? I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there anyone on council that objects to moving forward with the survey in twenty-twenty? Councilman Madera?
Well, I think there might be some overlap, you know, this year with, uh, comprehensive plan where, uh, it might be beneficial to, to stick with the comprehensive plan and not give people, you know, survey fatigue as, you know, um, the consultant alluded to during her presentation that it's already occurring. And it occurred this year where the response rating was not, you know, where we would like it to be. So I would, uh, like to skip for twenty-twenty.
Councilman Hurst?
Yeah, uh, I agree with Councilman Madera. I think if we were to move forward, uh, you know, I, I feel like after or during the presentation that we had today earlier that there was some questions on demographics and, you know, how that was collected. And although the data in general is valuable to us, without, you know, having a fair demographic spread that we all know what we'd be looking for, you know, maybe a, a fair amount of responses or equal, or close to equal amount of responses on the south side of town as there is to the north side of town and even maybe, uh, neighborhood-wise, just, uh, due to the age of the neighborhood or whatever the case may be. Um, due to different services closer to different neighborhoods, you know, those all would create, I think the, the value we'd be looking for out of a survey like this, but without those kind of uh, hard boundaries that we would be looking for in demographics needed on the response, I, I'm not sure it'll create the additional value we're looking for. Uh, I think if there were those boundaries, it could also help us in the, uh, master plan. Uh, kind of a different voice, uh, to, to, um, to consider when doing the master plan, but, you know, without knowing those demographics and understanding exactly uh, what that means, seems to me we might be duplicating our work as Councilman Madera suggested.
Councilwoman Alan Thomas?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to agree also with Councilmember, um, Madera. Right now, I, do you think it's more beneficial to postpone the survey for this year? Thank you.
Thank you. So right now I have three council members who wish to postpone the survey. Any other comments? Councilwoman Grimes?
I'm fine with postponing the survey as well for all reasons mentioned.
Thank you. Councilwoman Noble?
I'll make it five postponing.
So we have enough people that have wished to postpone, so, uh, that'll be the direction given to staff. Next on the agenda, I'm sorry, next you have your public art maintenance plan that you need to brief us on.
Thank you all for that direction and bear with me just a moment while I share my screen. So I'm here presenting on the public art maintenance plan and just some background information for you all. In two thousand thirteen, the public art master plan was adopted by the city council. The city currently owns thirty-nine pieces of art. And a critical function of the public art maintenance plan is to ensure the care, conservation and preservation of city's public art through regular inventory, condition assessment, conservation and maintenance. So the public art maintenance plan is funded by the capital improvement projects, the one percent for public art fund with ten percent set aside for maintenance. The city can also request matching funds from other departments, grants and other programs on a case-by-case basis. And cultural council can also solicit private funding or grants for conservation and maintenance funds to supplement the annual budget. So again, why is public art maintenance plan, why is this important? It's here to maintain, conserve, preserve and restore. The plan elements, the main elements here include a collection database with curatorial, conservation, administrative, photographic information. There will be a condition report with the physical inspection photos and maintenance budget recommendations. And then obviously the final piece of the plan is the, the, the actual conservation and restoration work. And this will be performed by a contracted service provider. So should the city council choose to adopt this maintenance plan, the next steps will be to, um, update that collection database, uh, draft a condition report and then with the maintenance plan drafted. And then looking ahead to twenty-twenty-one is when the maintenance will begin. So the city would post an RFP to hire a contracted service provider to perform, uh, the ma- the maintenance and conservation work. And that contract would be administered by Public Works. So just looking for the direction from you all tonight, does the city council wish to approve the resolution to adopt the public art maintenance plan? I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Guardiola?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, during the cultural council, we talked about, uh, some of our departments or Public Works or Parks and Recs helping with, uh, the minimal, uh, not restoration, but cleaning. Um, when we looked at, we got the, the, uh, the art inventory and we looked at what's wrong with them now. Some of them just need a power wash. Or, um, is there any way that that could still happen instead of going and contracting someone to do a power wash on the Big Buffalos where it, it seems fairly easy?
Yeah, so I think is, uh, part of that condition report that's going to be conducted each year, it's, um, it is a little more detailed, it's just a little more than, um, just power washing things off. So that'll be conducted on a piece-by-piece basis. And that's why we're looking to bring in, in that contracted service provider to, um, provide that higher level of work that, uh, Public Works is not able to, uh, do to maintain the art.
Correct. We were just discussing at the cultural council, if we could keep stuff in-house, let's keep it in-house. But we have to contract, contract out. Thank you.
Councilman Hurst?
Got to add to that, uh, Councilman Guardiola and I are both on, uh, cultural council and, and these discussions, um, have happened frequently since, uh, being appointed to that. And, you know, obviously the fiduciary responsibility is the first thing for me on this is, you know, we put aside money of every public improvement project for the public art. And, you know, to maintain that long-term seems like a fiduciary responsibility of the council. And so, um, you know, trying to find the money to maintain the public art, the perception of our community and to maintain the kind of intent and reason we committed the funding in the first place seems to be, uh, just the long-term commitment that we all have to make to this. And so, um, hundred percent in agreement with Councilman Guardiola. Um, you know, if the assessment's done, I understand that because it is art, you know, uh, someone without art experience may not have the ability to assess the situation appropriately. So bringing in a professional to do that makes a lot of sense. But if the, you know, resolution, um, this year at the Buffalos is that all they need is a power wash, then I would ask that we don't ask a, a, a fourth party, if you will, to get involved and do that work. That we use the resources available within the city, um, to do that work as, as we can. And then obviously look outside of our organization if, if, uh, we don't have that expertise. So, um, I support this moving forward for obvious reasons.
Any other comments or questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve Resolution two zero two zero dash six-three. Councilman Hurst?
Motion to approve as stated.
Councilwoman Alan Thomas?
I second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution two zero two zero dash six-three, the public art maintenance plan. Is there any discussion? Seeing no requests for discussion, will the city clerk please read the title and take a roll call vote?
Resolution twenty twenty dash six-three, resolution approving the public art maintenance plan for the city of Commerce City. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Guardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are his ordinances on first reading. First ordinance is ordinance two-two-eight-nine, the Adams County Open Space Grant. Does anyone on council have any questions for staff regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion and a second to introduce ordinance two-two-eight-nine by Councilor Seaton to approve on first reading. Councilwoman Alan Thomas?
I make a motion to approve the ordinance as stated.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance two-two-eight-nine by Councilor Seaton to approve on first reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the city clerk please read the title and take a roll call vote?
Ordinance two-two-eight-nine, an ordinance amending the twenty-twenty budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Adams County Open Space Grant Funds in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars for the Veterans Memorial Park renovation project and authorizing related matters. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Guardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Alan Thomas, you have your hand up. Was there a comment you needed to make?
Yes, um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I have an ordinance I want to bring up for the- I have an ordinance I want to bring up for the first reading. And I've already spoken to the city manager, Robert Sheasley, and he advised me now's the time to bring it up. There's a draft ordinance regarding limiting city council meeting times. And I move to introduce and approve the ordinance on the first reading. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve and introduce an ordinance on first reading that would limit the length of council meetings to no more than four hours. The extension would require a vote every thirty minutes thereafter to go beyond that four-hour limitation. Councilwoman Noble?
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second to introduce and approve that ordinance on first reading. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Allen Thomas?
This size, need to lower my hand, that's an error.
Mr. Sheasley?
So when Ms. Allen Thomas raised this to me, I indicated this would be an appropriate time to bring this matter forward, and it is. But per the charter, and she knows this, I think everyone knows this, that we have to read the titles of ordinances and resolutions, but we have to read the entirety of an ordinance if it is not made available to the council and everybody in attendance at the meeting. We could do that by possibly putting it up here on the screen and scrolling through it, but otherwise I'm required to read it in full when it is introduced. And so, if this does pass, I will likely need to read the ordinance in its entirety. So just wanted to make that note.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Hurst?
So I haven't been able to read it to its entirety, and I understand that the, you know, high-level view is cut it off at four hours. So please jump in and stop me, but, you know, although I like the idea of having set, you know, six to ten meetings, you know, there are times where, you know, maybe ten thirty because it's a four-hour meeting and we had to start at six thirty due to URA or something along those lines. You know, I really think a bit of flexibility, a little more flexibility there, and I would be a lot more interested in the idea. You know, for me, since the new council has come on, we've asked for quite a bit of additions to what the current city staff is doing. And we've also had quite the unprecedented events occurring in our, you know, short tenure that we've all had together. And so asking the city staff for more and giving them less time to deliver it is only going to delay some important issues. And so finding ways to prioritize for them, work the schedule out would also be a high priority, and I would like to figure out how we do that because I work Tuesday morning too. I understand exactly the intent of this, so I'm not, I'm not discounting that whatsoever. But I'm also trying to understand how city staff, you know, will meet our expectations of delivering on, you know, new development possibilities of all the things that we're asking them to do right now, additional budget information, additional committees, those types of things. How do you appropriately get those done, report back to us, and really limit ourselves on the information we can get into? Because quite honestly, on some of these topics, we will need to call special meetings because in and of themselves are at least two-hour discussions. And so we end up running into a wall very quickly on all the other kind of subtopics that we're talking about that may not take that much time. Some of those may be missed, or we will not be able to complete conversations due to a time limitation. And then voting every half hour, that could be after I go on a rant, we're already voting again, you know. And so, you know, same type of thing. So not opposed to the idea in general, but just maybe creating a little bit more flexibility in the ordinance would be more palatable for me.
Councilman Madera?
Yeah, I, I think I'm kind of on the same camp, you know, we do ask a lot of staff, we have more presentations than ever before, and, you know, that was all at our direction. And, you know, the other thing is, this isn't just on staff and the agendas. This is on us too, and, you know, we need to be just stay on topic. A lot of times we get off topic when we're talking about one thing and repeat ourselves. And, you know, so this is as much on us as it is, you know, just the agendas in general. So, you know, I would like to see an amendment for five hours. I think, you know, eleven o'clock's fair. We finished ninety percent of our meetings before then. And, you know, and I just ask for everyone to, you know, stay on topic and, you know, try to limit repeating and, you know, all these wrong questions that draw the meetings out.
Thank you. Councilman Guardiola?
Thank you. Yeah, I think the four hours will keep us in line a little bit more. I got a phone call from an elderly resident who stays up and watches our meetings. And she explained that, you know, she went to bed. So it's not just us, and I agree with you, Oscar, that it's us asking for that information, and we do go off topic a lot of times. So I think it's about our residents who watch these and are just watching us, right? And so the information is all important. But I think having that four hours will drive us to, you know, not repeat ourselves too much, you know, where we all like to say sometimes the same things and echo this, and it's our right, don't get me wrong. But I just think the four hours will really bring us into, you know, asking the questions you need to be asked and continuing the meeting. So I would be with four hours. If council wants, we could definitely go up to five. You know, but just know that we have a lot of people that are watching this right now, and it's bedtime for them. We chose this, we ran our campaigns and got elected. But the residents should also, we should be considered. So I'll be, I could go four or even five hours, it's up to the motion maker.
Councilwoman Allen Thomas?
Yes, and just to clarify, you know, along the same line as Councilmember Guardiola, I did request this ordinance because I have been receiving several calls from constituents and residents as well who have advised me, you know, hey, come on, ten, ten thirty, that's enough. And I think come ten o'clock, ten thirty, we're losing a lot of important voices and residents knowing what's going on in the city. I would be willing to amend the motion to four and a half hours to ten thirty. But I think, you know, getting past ten o'clock, it's not fair, like I said, to our residents, our constituents, and the city staff as well. And yes, you know, I'm willing to put as much effort into being an elected official as possible, but it's not only about ourselves, it's about them as well. So I just wanted to clarify that. So thank you.
Mr. Sheasley, did you have a comment to make?
No, sir, I apologize. I will lower my hand.
Yeah, so before I go on to Councilwoman Smith, Councilwoman Allen Thomas has amended her motion to four and a half hours. Councilwoman Noble, do you accept that amendment on your second?
Yes, I'll accept that amendment.
So the motion in the second has been amended to limit the meeting to four and a half hours. Councilwoman Smith?
I appreciate the amendment up to four and a half hours because I think sometimes four hours, it just isn't enough. There's a lot of stuff going on right now. So I think the four and a half hours, even up to five would be good. Thank you.
Councilwoman Allen Thomas, do you have additional comments?
No, I meant to lower my hand, thank you.
Councilman Hurst?
So the four and a half hours definitely makes me more willing to have this discussion. It really, you know, Councilwoman Allen Thomas, I hear you, you know, ten thirty, beyond ten thirty, we all can start having, you know, questionable cognitive discussions anyways because depends on what time you woke up for work this morning. So I hear you on that, you know, we've talked about eleven o'clock should be a hard stop in the past before. I'm willing to say ten thirty. The only thing that I would like us to talk about, you know, to make a commitment to each other and work closely with staff on this is, you know, we have asked a lot, and I appreciate it because we all gone on council to make a change, and so we're all trying to have a voice in that change. And so we've asked staff to take on a lot, and I'm sure at times with this pandemic on top of it, it has been drinking from a fire hose. And I know it is, you know, working for a state agency right now. So, you know, working closely with staff, prioritizing, and I know Councilwoman Noble brought this up, you know, prioritizing topics on the agenda, but really committing to if we can make timely decisions, you know, maybe ten days out, committing to a second and shorter meeting of the week, maybe putting a two-hour time limit on that just until we get into this rhythm to where we've answered a lot of our questions that we've had as a new council. And we get more into the four-hour rhythm is a pretty easy thing to do. I just think right now, we have to temper our expectations on timing because of all that we're asking. But when we start getting, you know, this groove of city report back, they're doing, you know, just as we expected. Okay, boom, four hours is pretty easy to do. So, you know, that's the only flexibility I was looking for, much more amenable to the four and a half hour one minute.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, when do you want to read the ordinance?
I will read it as quickly as I can.
Go ahead.
I'll just read, I'll skip the recitals. Section, this will be ordinance twenty-two ninety. Section one. The Commerce City Revised Municipal Code is hereby amended to include a new section two dash two thousand and three as follows. Section two dash two thousand and three, time of adjournment subsection A, adjournment. The City Council shall adjourn upon approval of a motion to adjourn or without motion upon the conclusion of business. Subsection B, automatic adjournment. All regular and special meetings and study sessions of the City Council shall adjourn automatically four and one-half hours after the commencement of the meeting or study session, if not adjourned by such time. For such, for purposes of this section, a regular or special meeting or study session held consecutively on the same day should be treated as the same meeting. At the time of adjournment, council must adjourn, but may consider only a motion to extend the meeting or a motion to schedule a special meeting. Subsection C, extension. By motion approved by a majority of the members present, a meeting or study session may be extended beyond the automatic adjournment in thirty-minute increments. Subsection D, effective automatic adjournment unless the City Council votes to schedule a special meeting to consider remaining business. Any scheduled agenda item not considered and any matter under consideration at the time of adjournment shall be continued automatically to the next regular meeting or study session as appropriate at such point on the next agenda as determined by the city manager. Section two, except as specifically modified herein, the provisions of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code shall remain unchanged in full force and effect. That concludes the ordinance.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second to introduce and approve on first reading, Ordinance two zero two zero dash nine zero. The ordinance has been read. Mr. Gibson, will you please take a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Guardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Huesman?
No.
Passes eight to one.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Administrative Council Business. We have a couple items that are on there. Prior to that, council, I need ten minutes of your time at the end of the evening to go into executive session to discuss something that is related to a presentation we received earlier this evening. So I have a motion to enter executive session pursuant to CRS two four dash six dash four zero two, parentheses four, parentheses B, to confer with the city attorney regarding a potential claim by the city in retention of special counsel. That is my motion. Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Have a motion in a second to enter into executive session. We will do that at the conclusion of the NIGID meeting. It will be for about ten minutes. Is there any discussion on that item? Seeing none, Mr. Gibson, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Guardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Huesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you for that. Like I said, we will do that after the NIGID meeting, and then you guys won't be released from that. We'll adjourn, I'll come back and finish out the actual council meeting. I do promise it will be very quick. Next on the agenda for Administrative Council Business is ratification of the US Conference of Mayors letter that was sent to everybody. Mr. Sheasley, would you please explain the ratification?
Yes, thank you. The mayor had a very short period of time to sign on to the letter that I believe is in the packet. And so the city council vote would just ratify his signature as an expression of the will of the city council.
Thank you. Any members of council wishing to make a motion? Mayor Pro Tim?
Motion to ratify the US Conference of Mayors letter.
Thank you. Councilman Hurst?
Second.
I think you have a motion in a second to ratify my signature being added to a letter from the US Conference of Mayors to the Congress regarding state and local funding under the new CARES Act that is being negotiated between the Congress and the administration right now. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we will take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Guardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Huesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is discussion of executive search firms. We'll see, interim city manager Tinklinberg, please lead the discussion.
Thank you, sir. In the packet from Armando was the breakdown of the rankings of the city council, basically, it was a summary of the scoring that the city council did for the executive search firms. And four firms were ranked the highest. And based on that rating, the HR director recommends Affion. So does council want to take action on that or want more information? Or what, where do you want to go from here with it?
Councilwoman Noble?
I'm happy with supporting that, but I have a question for you, Mr. Tinklinberg. At what point will the salary range be determined?
That would come up in two ways. First, the range would need to be determined by city council for the advertisement, you know, the publication that goes out. And then unless you choose not to list anything, that's also your right. And then once you settle on a finalist, then that would be an item that would be negotiated between you and that finalist.
I had looked at the city manager website and job search for these companies, and they advertised the salary ranges. And one thing I wanted us to keep in mind is that some city managers have more responsibilities than they do in Commerce City. They oversee water, they oversee waste management. In Thornton, you know, or Broomfield, they also do human services. So I just wanted us to be able to keep that in mind when we set a salary range. So we're looking at apples instead of oranges, or something like that. Councilmember Hurst is right, you do lose your mind at a certain point, although I may have earlier also. I can't, I won't be the, you could be the judge of that.
I might be losing it with you because I knew exactly what you meant, so.
The direct answer that I should give you also is that there is no set salary range for the city manager. There are for all other positions in the city, but that has always been at the discretion of the city council.
Well, it's advertised. It was in the advertisements, and that's why I wondered at what point this will occur. But I guess that's a, if you could just let Armando know that Um, Armando know that, uh. It would be something to take a look at.
Thank you, is there anyone wishing to take action on this item this evening? Councilman Hurst.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion for, uh, to approve the contract with Affion.
Motion to approve the contract for executive search for with Affion, uh, Councilman Wardiola.
I'll second.
A motion in a second to approve that contract, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you, next on the agenda is a childcare grant, um, this is an item that you all received an email on. Um, we have about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars left in CARES Act funding, which is money that we received from the federal government through Adams County to deal with. Covid nineteen response, um, we have a unique situation where one of our school districts is going to go back to school. With in person and virtual learning and the other district is only going to have virtual learning to begin for probably the remainder of the first quarter. Um, that has me concerned about, uh, parents' ability to get daycare for their kids, uh, lined up. With, uh, having them at home full day, so would like to make a motion that we put a hundred thousand dollars of the remaining CARES Act funding. Into a grant that would allow, uh, parents who are affected by covid nineteen to be able to pay for childcare expenses that are above and beyond what they normally would. Uh, associate with, that is my motion, Councilwoman Alan Thomas.
I second the motion.
Do you have a motion in a second on that, is there any discussion? Councilman Hurst.
Yes, um, this would be a question to council, or I'm sorry, to staff, whether it's to Mr. Tinklinburg or if you'd like to delegate to somebody else, it's up to him. Um, you know, being that this was on the agenda and we was kind of, uh, known that we were going to discuss this, would you mind, uh, kind of giving us. An overview of the thought of how, you know, if passed, we would execute something like this?
We have obtained some information, uh, from Brighton in terms of what they plan, uh, their plan has not been approved yet. And, uh, gotten some other information from other, uh, entities as well, so we we can draft something up for, uh, city council's consideration.
But you but you do feel confident that with the information you got, it's something that we can, um, deliver with it from city staff?
I think so, I say partially confidently.
Oh, no, I mean, I I just want to make sure, I I absolutely support this, I just want to make sure. Um, this is something that we we feel like we can deliver in a timely, you know, turnaround because. School starts like soon for for that district and so, um, for both districts, I mean, and so we, um. Just want to make sure that it's something that we can turn around in that time and we don't promise it and then not able to deliver in time.
Thank you, any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera.
Mayor Hughesman, I'm sorry, before before the vote goes, can I clarify the motion? Just to understand is, is you don't have to remake it, is the motion to to have it set up and implemented? Or to bring bring that back for council?
I would, uh, normally make the motion to have it come back to council, however, we don't have a council meeting for another year, uh, month. After this one and that is too late to wait and so my motion is to proceed with setting it up and implementing it as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes, sir, Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you very much, look forward to seeing that program implemented, uh, next on the agenda is Rocky Mountain Arsenal Letter of Support, will Councilman Hurst please lead the discussion?
Yeah, so Councilwoman Grimes and I both sit sit on the, um, Friends of the Front Range, uh, Wildlife Rescue. Uh, wildlife, sorry, it's a it's a long group name, but but basically we are advocates for the arsenal. Um, in in the the programs outside of what the federal government runs, so, um, you know, trying to bring. School age kids out to the arsenal to experience, you know, the the urban, um. Refuge, which is is very well known throughout our nation and so, um, you know, with with the recent environmental. Um, legislation that was passed to permanently fund, um. National parks, refuges and and the the likes, uh, we on the, um, Friends of the Front Range group. The are 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 asking to sign this letter, um, are asking for council support to sign the letter. And really, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read you six, um, or five benefits or five reasons why we're doing this and this is strictly from the group and so. Read it verbatim really quickly and then if there's any questions, we'll be happy to answer. So our organization is making this conceptual proposal for Lake Mary Education Center unofficially and unsolicited by anyone. We have leeway to do this, where officials like the refuge manager dare not to go, he is though aware of our action. Speed is crucial, no doubt others are thinking the same thing and we have a ninety day window of opportunity. That ninety day window is, um, was defined in the legislation, um, as to a response on what type of projects. The the money could be spent on, um, so. So we want something on paper so we can shop it with, um, with the federal agencies and our congressional delegation. Uh, and we already have a good relationship and we we plan to leverage that. Um, and we're hoping to get solid word that the director will visit as we will will make a visit out here this year, early next, as we discussed when we were in DC. Uh, in December, so, um, you know, uh, my personal feeling is that that was one of the most productive. Meetings that we had on our advocacy trip in DC, uh, I think she was very well receptive and really understood the value of having this urban refuge. And so I think, um, you know, advocating for this and and better programs at the arsenal is not just beneficial to Commerce City, but our region as a whole. And so, um, that is why I'm putting this forward in front of you guys to ask for, um. Council blessing to to sign on to this letter with Adams County and I believe Denver City and County is is signing on as well.
Thank you, any other discussion, any motions by council? Mr. Smith?
Yes, Mayor, I took the liberty of, uh, revising that letter just a bit and put it on, um, city council's letterhead. Uh, Mr. Gibson can pull that up if you'd like to take a look at it, um, and I assume the motion would include. Authorizing you to sign it, which is why I attached your name to the bottom of the draft.
Thank you, while we all read this, uh, Councilman Hurst.
Uh, I actually had my hand up to to, um, motion to approve this, so I will let everybody have the time to read it before we. Push to approve.
And you want to make your motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this amended version of the letter, um, in support of the, uh. Education Center at the Wildlife Refuge.
Thank you, Councilwoman Grimes.
Second the motion.
Thank you, I have a motion in a second to approve me signing a letter being sent to the Director of Fish and Wildlife Services. In support of an education center being built at Mary Lake on the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you, and before you ask, yes, you can attach my digital signature to that.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Um, next on the agenda is setting the city council's special meeting, agenda items that were scheduled for tonight when the agenda was published last week were removed due to time constraints. A special meeting needs to be set to consider the postponed items, is there an evening that council would like to do? Uh, my recommendation on August thirty first, we have a joint meeting with the school district that is usually a shorter meeting, recommend when we put these postponed items. Onto that evening with a special meeting that would take place the thirty first, that's two weeks from tonight, any comments or discussion on that? Councilwoman Grimes.
We're, uh, having that meeting after the joint, uh, school board meeting on the thirty first.
Mayor Pro Tim.
I'm just letting you know I won't be in town, so I won't make that.
Councilwoman Alan Thomas.
Yes, that works for me, I'm in agreement with that.
Any other discussion on that, any objection to it being tacked on to the evening of the thirty first following our joint meeting with the Adams fourteen school district? Seeing none, please make that happen, uh, next on the agenda are council members with administrative, uh, council business. Councilman Hurst.
I'd like to make a request for a city council sponsorship funding opportunity, uh, the sponsorship amount would be for twenty-five hundred dollars. For a paddle sponsor and a table for six to the event, uh, the event is called Ignite Under the, uh, Under the Stars Masquerade. It is Friday, September eighteenth of twenty twenty, um, it it falls within our current budget. Uh, that we have allocated for this type of work, uh, which we have seventeen thousand dollars left as of August eleventh. Um, and the, uh, the request submission was sent, um, earlier in the week. And I took took the action on my own.
Thank you, I have a motion to approve the, uh, sponsorship request that you all received earlier in the week for the Community Uplift Partnership Fundraising Event in September. Um, because I have a bunch of people who raised their hands for administrative council business, if you want to second that, please raise your physical hand so I can call on you. Councilmember Madera.
Second.
Great, I have a motion in a second to approve that funding request, is there any discussion? Again, please raise your physical hand because I cannot discern who wants to make talk in administrative council business and who wants to talk on this one. Seeing no requests for discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you, Councilman Hurst, did you have other administrative action items?
I did not tonight.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, I'd like to request that staff look into the roadwork that's happening at a hundred and twelfth and Chambers. The cones are getting very challenging to follow, I'm worried that it's becoming a safety ins, uh, uh, situation. And, uh, on top of that, uh, they're rerouting traffic kind of at the spur of the moment, which is causing a lot of backups. Um, and it's just generally quite a lot of chaos, um, I was actually stopped there today and they tried to reroute us and I spoke to. To the lady trying to reroute us and she didn't know what the the guy across the street knew and it was just, it was a lot of confusion. And, um, just hoping that somebody on staff can reach out to that contractor and see if we can get, um, get that tightened up a bit. So that's a little more, um, efficient for residents traveling through there.
Just to confirm, we're talking a hundred and twelfth and Chambers?
Yeah, a hundred and twelfth and Chambers.
All right, we will look into that.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Noble.
Hundred and twelfth and Chambers has been kind of a problem child, but. It'll be ready at some point here, um, I, uh, actually wanted to go back to the Suncor issue from earlier. And there are some things that we can do, we may be precluded from, um, putting in any sort of. Ordinances or rules or regulations or whatever, but we can certainly use our positions as a bully pulpit. And perhaps craft a resolution that could go to, um, CDPHE and to the governor. About, uh, Suncor and what has been occurring there and I would also like to ask though. If there could be an exploration of anything that surrounds Suncor that could in some way be something that. We can as a city. Control, I don't know what that might be, but but something if we could look into that. Um, I did also want to be able to take a look in the future, not tonight, but I will bring it up again. That we can look at some sustainability issues where we aren't relying on the refinery anymore than anyone else is. That we can start thinking about shifting our fleet into electric vehicles, for example, or looking at our building code. Are we doing all that we can regarding sustainability? Are we approving too many homes with vinyl siding that has to be replaced regularly? Are there things that we can be doing, so I hope that we can also take a proactive position on the refinery that isn't just about. Um, the dangers which are, uh, exist and are dreadful. But also on steps that we can take as a city to show that we are earnest about making this change and I have, um. A follow up of, I think, I saw. Chief Nichols, I think is on the line, I ask, uh, in the last month on behalf of of residents. And the resident spoke during public comment about having a dog, uh, two dogs attacked and himself attacked. By other dogs in the neighborhood when they came out of a home and weren't on leash. And the question that the residents had was, um, why is it an educational opportunity when a. Uh, pet injures another pet and a resident? And, um, I think you were going to look into that, Chief Nichols, but I haven't yet heard what the outcome was. And the residents are asking me also what the outcome was.
Thank you for the question, um, I don't recall there being an opportunity for me to come back to council to discuss that. So I apologize in there if that was a mistake that I made, uh, as a general rule, when an animal bites another animal, we typically do not. We don't seize the property of the owner and we certainly don't put the animal in the quarantine at the animal shelter. Uh, there's a cost associated to the city regarding that and the issue of seizing someone's private property is also a. A concern for the police department, uh, we do, however, when an animal bites a human, uh, we do take that into consideration. There are quite a few things that we we look at to make sure if the animal can stay in the house, the ability for the owner to quarantine it. Uh, the circumstances surround it, so it isn't as simple as a, uh, bright line rule that says. If this happens, we do this, there are a lot of factors that get taken into account regarding that, uh, regarding the specific incident that you are discussing. Uh, it is my understanding that the animal that caused the biting of the second animal, the suspect animal, I'll call it that. For lack of a better term, uh, that bit the victim that animal, uh, was simply an opportunity to play with that. Pet. Um, and depending upon who's listening to this, that could sound very crass and I apologize for that, it's extremely difficult to describe two animals interacting. Uh, but that animal, the suspect animal fled from the house with an opportunity to play with the victim animal. And that's what caused the biting, so it was not an intentional, go get this pet and bite it. Uh, so those were all the factors that were taken into account, hopefully that, uh, provides a better understanding of what occurred.
I doubt if the residents think that that uh, the other dog was being playful. So we probably haven't heard the end of this yet. But thank you very much. I will provide that answer to them.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the opportunity to explain.
Thank you. Any other council members with administrative council businesses this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports. Interim City Manager.
Nothing additional from me. Uh, you did talk earlier in the meeting about uh, appointing members to the council policy and governance committee during this period of uh, council admin business.
That is true. Is that something council wishes to pursue at this time or push that to our next meeting?
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Sounds good. Everybody good with next meeting? Great, thank you. Um, nothing else from you, Mr. Tinklinburg, Mr. Sheasley?
Just want to note, um, as everyone knows, extraction only gas uh, is currently in a bankruptcy proceeding. Cities received various filings related to that. We don't believe that there's a need to take any action right now because the city currently has no claims relative to extraction. However, I just want you to know that I, unless you object, I'm going to consult with a bankruptcy uh, specialist to make sure that we are set should anything occur. Uh, mostly giving you that uh, for notice here unless there's an objection to me uh, taking a few hours of a of bankruptcy attorney's time. Thank you. That was it.
Thank you. Any other council members wishing to make a report this evening? Seeing none, I had a very unproductive week last week and have nothing to report myself. That will um, conclude our business for the this meeting. So I will uh, recess this meeting and move to the NIGID meeting. Um, we'll call the meeting daughter and ask the secretary to call the roll.
Chair Hughesman.
Present.
Vice Chair Frank. Board Member Madera.
Present.
Board Member Alan Thomas.
Present.
Board Member Noble.
Present.
Board Member Wardiola.
Present.
Board Member Hurst.
Present.
Board Member Grimes.
Present.
Board Member Smith.
Present.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And for the record, Vice Chair Frank is here, even though she did not respond to the roll call. Um, first on the agenda is approval of minutes. I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve the minutes of June fifteenth, twenty twenty. Board Member Alan Thomas.
I make a motion to approve the minutes to state it.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Frank.
Second thought.
Thank you. Have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of June fifteenth, twenty twenty. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Board Member Madera.
Yes.
Board Member Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Board Member Noble.
Yes.
Board Member Wardiola.
Yes.
Board Member Hurst.
Yes.
Board Member Grimes.
Yes.
Board Member Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chair Frank.
Yes.
Chair Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Yeah, next on the agenda are resolutions. First resolution is NIGID twenty twenty dash zero four. Are there any questions for staff regarding this resolution? Seeing no questions, I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt resolution NIGID twenty twenty dash zero four. Vice Chair Frank.
Motion to adopt resolution NIGID twenty twenty dash zero four.
You, Board Member Madera.
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion in a second to adopt resolution NIGID twenty twenty dash zero four. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Board Member Madera.
Yes.
Board Member Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Board Member Noble.
Yes.
Board Member Wardiola.
Yes.
Board Member Hurst.
Yes.
Board Member Grimes.
Yes.
Board Member Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chair Frank.
Yes.
Chair Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. That convene concludes the agenda for the NIGID meeting for this evening. We will now adjourn this meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Uh, previously in the meeting, the city council voted unanimously to go into executive session to receive legal advice. Um, at this time, we will proceed to that executive session. The city attorney has sent out a link for that meeting. Um, please go ahead and leave this meeting and go to the other one. For those members in the public, this concludes the last amount of business we'll be doing for this evening, but the meeting will stay live until I come back in order to adjourn. Thank you. For those members in the public, this concludes the last amount of business we'll be doing for this evening, but we'll stay live until I come back in order to adjourn. Thank you. For those members in the public, this concludes the last amount of business we'll be doing for this evening, but we'll stay live until I come back in order to adjourn. Thank you. For those members in the public, this concludes the last amount of business we'll be doing for this evening, but we'll stay live until I come back in order to adjourn. Thank you. Thank you.